City Council, of course, we're meeting on a Tuesday because the second Monday of the month was a holiday. Before we get started, I'd just like to remind folks that there are devices available for those who need hearing assistance, and those use a transmitter and headphone. They're available at the Concord TV booth in the back of the room where Michael right now is waving. So if you need that kind of audio assistance, please talk to Michael. Okay. Would you please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, it's Councilor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Timbaland.
Present.
Councilor Fantasy.
He's here but in the bathroom.
Yes, correct.
Councilor Foot.
Present.
Councilor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Councilor Horn.
Here.
Councilor Keach.
Here.
Councilor Kretovic.
Excuse us.
Councilor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor McNamara.
Here.
Councilor Schlosser.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Councilor Seku.
Present.
And Councilor Todd.
Here.
Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to approve the City Council minutes of September 8th, 2025.
Google.
Seconded. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. We have four items that were removed from the consent calendar. I believe they're items nine, items 24, 25, and 28. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
All right. Those items will be taken up at the end of our other business. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent cal-- I'm sorry, Counselor?
Yes, I would like to move to accept the consent calendar, and I have a request, which is that I was not able to pull item eight, and if there's no objection, I would simply like to request that it also be referred to the E-DAC Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Does anyone have an objection to that?
I'll just, can we just look at it quick?
It's item eight. It's the report on the C-Pacer program. It's being referred to fiscal policy, city solicitor, community development, and I would also like it to go to E-DAC for their feedback if there's objection.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So that was a motion.
The two of them.
That was a motion. All right, thank you.
Yes, so move.
Seconded by Counselor Seku. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Consent calendar is adopted. Thank you, Counselor. That brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, item 33A.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18 Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Parking Prohibited at All Times in Designated Places, to modify parking requirements on Pleasant Street between Langley Parkway and the intersection with Hopkinson Road and Dunbarton Road.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, the Parking Committee discussed this referral and heard testimony from residents along Pleasant Street, and following discussion and examining alternatives. And given that the grass panel and the sidewalk are not designed for parking, the committee recommends that both sides of Pleasant Street between Langley Parkway and the intersection with Hopkinson Road and Dunbarton Road be restricted to no parking at all times.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Right, hearing none? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this item?
Your Honor?
Counselor.
I would like to say that my constituents are unable to be here due to a death in the family, but they are in favor of this. They actually live across the street, and they have had numerous issues. So they just asked that I speak on their behalf.
I think I've met with the constituents as well. They live across the street from Beechill, right? Birchill.
Yes, the Birchies. Yes, correct.
All right, the Birchies. Thank you. All right. All right, seeing no testimony, I'll close this hearing. Madam Clerk, item 33B.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, specific to the zoning code, Chapter 28, by amending Article 28-2, Zoning Districts and allowable uses, Section 28-2-4K Table of accessory uses, Number 13 specifically, accessory dwelling unit, Article 28-5 supplemental standards, Section 28-5-52, single-family detached dwellings with one accessory dwelling unit, Article 20-9 administration enforcement, Section 28-9-4, decisions by the planning board, Section 28-9-4F, architectural design review, and the glossary.
Congratulations on conducting it. That's Steeple Chase. Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry.
The, the, the--
But you pay more.
It's a compliment. The, well, less experience. In accordance with the requirements of House Bill 577, as well as input received from the city's Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Architectural Design Review Committee, then the Planning Board, you see that ordinance that the City Clerk just proposed in front of you. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Planning Board on August 20. During its review, the Board voted unanimously to modify the original draft ordinance to eliminate provisions that required that either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit be occupied by the owner. The intention of the owner occupancy provision was to discourage investors from acquiring single-family detached dwellings to operate as rental properties, and by eliminating this provision, the principal dwelling and ADU may be used as rental units simultaneously. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this? Mr. Schweitzer.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Roy Schweitzer, and I'd like to thank you for batching a great number of things for me to testify on in one meeting to save me traveling. But anyway, as revised by the Planning Board, this thing is essentially the slumlord's delight. I mean, we already have a problem with the legislature that the more liberal members have seemed to decide they really want to join the free state project and eliminate zoning. So they're doing all sorts of silly things, which unfortunately we have to put up with. But the Planning Board has tried to make this worse. And part of the problem we have in the city is that one way to make housing cheaper is to make it smaller, but the city likes to keep allowing bigger and bigger things. If you would, you know, stick to making things the minimum size, then there might be, you know, things that were cheaper that people could afford to use. So, you know, increasing the allowable size of things is only making housing more expensive. So that's my first comment. They are banning manufactured housing from accessory dwelling units. To me, that seems like a very, you know, convenient thing to have, if you could find something that fits. And I don't know how other tiny houses, for instance, might be considered manufactured housing. I mean, that might be something you might want to put in your backyard. Tiny house, but the way this is written, you can't do that. And my chief complaint about what the Planning Board has done is occupied by owner. In other words, the advantage of requiring this thing to be occupied by owner is that, number one, this is a way to provide housing that people can afford. You know, if they buy a property that has, you know, an attached dwelling unit, then they can rent it out, or they can do like the people next to me who live in the small unit and rent out the big one. But by making this an investor thing, then you're eliminating this, you know, chance for people to get cheaper housing because the investor will pay more for it and rent them both out. And the other part of this is unfortunately, that if the owner has to live there, then, you know, they don't want to create something that is not livable. Whereas, once you, the investors buy it, you know, they can cram anything they want to in that lot because they don't have to put up with it. They can even be out of state. And so we, if we want to make our city livable, we need to, you know, quit making things easy for the slumlords and, you know, make it, you know, a place that people want. Now, the thing that the legislature has done is this one parking space per unit. And, you know, that's just something they did. There's no logic to it. I don't know if Counselor Schultz has visited my neighborhood, but I mean, we have a problem right now. There are two properties that there's not enough parking, so they park on the sidewalk. And I can't get the city to go give them tickets or anything. So how are you going to have a livable, walkable neighborhood if people are starting to park on the sidewalk? You just had an example of that in your previous thing, where, you know, apparently a business hasn't provided enough parking, so people are parking on the sidewalk and ruining the sidewalk and so forth. And if you don't want to believe me, you visit Chapel Street when you go home, and you can see those two cars parked on the sidewalk, or those two vehicles parked on the sidewalk, I will say. And so I think first off, if we're going to allow the owner not to reside there, what we need to do is change the zoning, so that essentially you're creating a duplex and not an ADU, if the owner doesn't have to live there. So we should change the zoning, so the size requirement for a single-family home, since it's going to allow an ADU, should be what we presently require for a duplex, because essentially they're requiring duplexes. And as far as the one parking space per unit, well, the legislature ruled on that, so we have to put up with it. But part of the, what the city has to do to make up for that is to say, okay, we will change the subdivision requirements, that all streets and subdivisions, if they don't provide two parking spaces per unit, have got to be 44 feet of pavement so you can have parking on the street, because that's what people are going to do if there's not enough parking spaces on the lot, is they're going to park on the street. So you need to make them build a street that's wide enough so they can do it. Or the other thing is, you say, okay, we are going to have a impact fee, that if you, you don't have to provide two spaces per unit, but if you don't, you have to pay an impact fee for the spaces you don't provide, so the city can afford to provide parking lots, or parking garages, or whatever it may be. So you need to send this thing back to the Planning Board, say, no, look, we don't want the slumlords in Concord. We want a livable city, so we need to scale some of this stuff back so that it'll actually work. So, you know, if you want cheaper housing, allow the manufactured housing, require the owner to live on site, and require either a wider street or a impact fee for parking if they don't provide enough. I mean, this idea of one space per unit is ridiculous. I mean, one of these places that's parked on the sidewalk, they've got four cars for their unit. And a lot of the duplexes have got, you know, three cars per side. I don't know where they came up with one, but it just outrages. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? All right, thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 33C.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $260,000 for fire department wages and benefits and authorizing an increase to the amount to be raised in taxes in the amount of $260,000 in the general fund for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, as a result of the negotiations between the city and local 1045, additional funding in the fiscal year, fiscal year 2026 budget is needed to cover the full cost increases included in that new contract. Resultantly, an additional $260,000 is needed to fund this variance, as requested to be provided through an increase in the amount of raised in taxes.
Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown.
Yes. Is there any reason, Mr. City Manager, why we could not pull these funds from the unassigned fund balance?
Yes, the--
If I could. Yes, you may.
So if you end up doing that, then you end up creating a hole in next year's budget, because it's a one-time revenue source.
Okay.
Right. And so when you actually did the contract negotiations, you understood that you would need this, these additional dollars to make the contracts work. That's why you gave the con, the union the contract that you gave them.
Follow-up here. Based on the amount that we currently have in the unassigned fund balance, if we pull this $260,000 from that this one time, are we still meeting our, I think we changed the percentage that we were, we decided we would have.
Goal.
Yes, are we still within our goal for the unassigned fund balance?
Be close. It'd be, it'd be close, but it depends if you do any other changes.
All right, thank you.
May I paraphrase for you, and you say it'll create a hole? Do I understand what you're saying is that even though this year we wouldn't have to raise taxes, next year in addition to whatever other pressures we have on our budget, this would have to be paid for by an additional increase in taxes?
Taxes next year.
Right, thank you. All right. Any other questions of the City Manager? All right. Would anyone in the public like to testify on this item? Mr. Schweitzer. Welcome back.
Hello again, everybody. And I agree with Counselor Brown that this is a relatively small amount, and instead of messing with taking it out of the, increasing the taxes, it can come out of the unassigned fund balance or one of the other funds that every now and every time, every other time the City Manager wants to take something out of a fund, he says this won't raise taxes. So let's take this $150,000 out of this fund and not raise taxes. And the other place I want to talk about is, I hope this contract you signed allows you to recoup funds from firefighters who engage in, I don't know what to call it, unfortunate conduct. We have heard that the city's insurer had to pay $450,000 due to conduct of some firefighters. And while that allegedly was paid by the insurance company, you can be sure that it's going to come back and haunt the city. We're going to have to pay that, plus probably their extra margin for it, so it'll cost us 500 grand. So I would like to suggest that the city go after the individuals who were involved in this, and dock their pay by $10,000 each, because, you know, that's only going to be like a fifth of what the city is paying. And it's not the taxpayers of the city that engaged in this egregious conduct. It was individuals who were employees. And they need to be told that you don't do stuff like this, and hit them where it hurts. Hit them on the money. We need to, you know, get the people who were doing this and say, look, it's going to cost you money because it's cost us money. And that's where you can get some of the money to pay this. And then you say, well, what about the supervisors in the fire department? Aren't they the ones that allowed this to go on? And the answer is, well, perhaps. And then they're going to say, well, look, we thought we were having fun. Isn't it the city personnel director and the city manager that should have told us to cut this out? And I can't say that. I disagree with that logic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? All right, thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 33D.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $53,000 to include $50,000 in the golf fund and $3,000 in the arena fund for fiscal year 2025, retroactive to June 30th, 2025, to be funded from excess revenues in the golf fund and fund balance in the arena fund.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, annually at the end of the fiscal year, the administration reviews total expenditures in each fund, provides supplemental appropriation requests if needed for funds that have exceeded budgeted expenditures. Fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, adjustments are requested for the golf and arena funds. Supplemental appropriations are requested for the golf fund in $50,000 and the arena fund in $3,000. So looking at it individually, the preliminary results for the golf fund are a gain of $177,600 in revenue received more than expenditures, a very positive result compared to the budget of $123,700. So as you can see, it did considerably better than budget. Preliminary results for revenues exceeded budget by $98,500. Preliminary results for expenses exceeded budget by $44,500. If you look at the arena fund, preliminary results for the arena fund are a loss of $135,700, revenues received less than expenditures, as compared to a budgeted loss of $84,600. So this is the exact opposite. Preliminary results for the revenues are short of budget by $48,600. Preliminary results for expenses exceed a budget by $2,400. Supplemental request amount is for $3,000 to align actual expenditure to the budget. So we just covered that $2,400 amount. Glad to hear any question.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown.
Yes, so I see the league and tournament is reflected in both revenues and expenses, and it was short of revenues, and it was also over expenses. And in looking at the monthly budget detail that was provided by the Deputy City Manager of Finance, it looks like we are not making any money at all from these leagues and tournaments. And I'm just wondering if there is a cap on the number that we have, because I know there are dozens that we have, and in fact, the Friends of the Beeve have had four. There are no donations towards us, and I think these leagues and tournaments keep us from having additional greens fees. So I'm wondering if there is a cap on the number of leagues and tournaments to allow for additional greens fees playtime.
Mr. City Manager.
So as you can see, the revenues are over expenditures by $54,000. So that's why we're asking just to round number $50,000 to cover the, that over expenditure. So you could see it actually did that much better than budget.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, would anyone in the public like to testify on this? Mr. Schweitzer.
Hello. I was reading the Government Finance Officers Association website, and under their audit standards, and one of the things they said was that not just the overall accounts of the city should, you know, balance out, but the individual funds should also balance out. And I think that whereas it may be legitimate for the city to use general funds to pay for golf expenses, that it should be noted that way. In other words, the golf fund should include all golf expenses, including bonds for the irrigation, bonds for parking lots, bonds for whatever. And then if the city wants to, you know, put money into the fund to cover them, that's fine. But essentially what you're doing now is you're trying to hide the fact that some of this stuff is not, you know, going through the golf fund accounts. And I don't think that's correct from an audit point of view, and I'd ask a CPA if, you know, look at that and maybe contact the city's auditors and look into it. But anyway, my point is that we don't really have a $50,000 surplus to put in the golf fund. We actually have a loss if you take those bond payments. So I'd like to say this $50,000, instead of putting it in the golf fund, you should put it, you know, toward that over expense of the firefighter's contract, because, you know, that's, that's really our money. It's not golf money, since they're operating at a loss with all their bond issues, and we should use it to pay that expense. And the last thing is, I will say, one of your suspense items, this is business about changing the age for junior members from 29 to 39. We saw that when it came in, and we thought the City Manager had actually done something appropriate, that the correct age for a, you know, junior member would be 29 and not 39. And so I hope when you vote on that tonight, you'll say, okay, the error made by the City Manager is in fact appropriate, and we will make the junior thing 29. I mean, I'm just terribly shocked at the stuff that you let the golf committee get away with. They actually, instead of trying to raise more money to pay for the clubhouse, they actually reduced some of the fees, some simulator fees, some of them have gone down. The more interesting thing is, apparently, you can now have three adults on a family membership, and two of the people that voted for that have a third adult in their family, and they didn't recuse themselves. So I don't think that's a good thing either. We need to, you know, get this golf stuff under control, so I hope you stick with keeping the junior membership at 29. And I hope you, you know, take the third person off the junior membership and do a few other things so they can actually start paying their fair share. Because remember, that half of the golf fees are paid by people out of town. And if you want to say the rec. department should subsidize golf fees for residents, that's one thing. But to say the city should subsidize golf for residents of Bo and Hopkinson and so forth, that's outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? All right, thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Welcome.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Chase. I live in Pennacook. And I just want to say that I absolutely 100% agree with everything that Roy had to say. I don't know how much more money we need to throw at this golf course while I am counting pennies and worrying about being taxed at my home, where we're debating whether we're going to raise the taxes because we can't afford to pay firefighters, but we just throw good money after golf all day long for people who can afford to pay greens fees. How long are we going to do this? How long? That's all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? All right, I'll declare the hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk, item 33.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $3,000, $3,500 for nuisance abatement at 30 Pennacook Street in Concord, and authorizing the use of $3,500 from the Community Improvement Reserve for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, I think you're all familiar with this property, and the city seeks to move forward with the abatement of the conditions of the exterior of the property in compliance with New Hampshire State Law, RSA 174. Colenforce specifically, the city seeks to hire a contractor to mow the vegetation as well as remove garbage and refuse that is accumulated on the property. The city will seek to recover those, these costs through the lien process outlined in RSA 147-7-B following completion of the work. Just an update on this, since then, last week, the city took the property for back taxes, so we would still want to go forward and clean up the property to help the neighborhood out. out, and then, of course, put that lien on the property so that when we then go to do something, when you decide to do something with the property, you'll have that lien on there, and you can decide what to do in the future. But I think it's imperative that that property be cleaned up for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Consular Brown.
Yes. Could you please explain the process for disbursements from the reserve funds? I noticed that this is coming from the Community Improvement Reserve, and then the following one is the Economic Development Reserve. Could you explain the process that we use for withdrawing funds from these capital reserve accounts?
Certainly. Brian wants to come up and correct me if I go wrong, but essentially, you hold a public hearing and make a determination if you'd like to take money out of the reserve for a certain purpose. The Community Improvement Fund, this is a purpose that is allowable under that, and that's where you would take the funds from. If you then receive those funds back, you can always obviously put them right back into the fund because you can use them on other properties if this comes up anywhere else in the community. So it's an in-and-out account.
Yeah, so I understand that capital reserve funds are required to have a very specific purpose. Is there an area where I can, we could see what the parameters are for the Community Improvement Reserve, for the Economic Development Reserve, so we know what qualifies and what doesn't?
Community Improvement Reserve is just...
Yeah, we had the city council approve the Community Reserve Fund or the, yeah, the Community Improvement Fund, I want to say, back in 2021. I don't remember the exact time, but the description of what the appropriate uses for the fund would be were in that resolution that the council approved at that time.
They're all approved by city council.
It's all approved by the city council. That's exactly right.
Counselor.
Yes, another one. And do the trustees of the trust funds disperse these accounts from the capital reserve?
No, the trustees don't vote on these disbursements from the capital reserve. Basically, what happens is the city council is the one who controls the money on these. So the city council will approve an expenditure for, in the general, let's say, the general fund budget is $3,500. The treasurer will see that resolution, and then she'll make an entry to actually withdraw the money from the reserve and deposit it into the city's regular checking accounts. When you actually look at our financial statements, you'll see a revenue coming into that fund or into the general fund for a transfer in from reserve. So if you look at any of our financial statements in a number of different departments, a lot of it is in the general overhead account, but you'll see transfer in from reserves. You'll also see it in recreation. We might have in general services, I don't recall. But you'll see transfer in from reserves and so you'll, or trusts, and you'll see the dollars that are actually going in. But those are based all entirely on what the appropriation or what the authorization from the city council. So if the city council doesn't authorize it, we don't actually do the transfers.
Oh? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. City...
Yeah, I'm just confused because I see that these funds are listed on the MS9 report, and my understanding, according to the charitable trust unit, that the trustees of the trust funds oversee and disperse capital reserve funds and trust funds. So are you saying that's not the case, that...
The city council is the one that authorized the transfer in and out to the reserve and trust funds. So when you look at, when you look at the MS9 reports and the MS10 reports, and then the trustees of the trust funds meet typically quarterly. So when they meet, they actually look at the investments along with the financial advisors that the city has with, right now, it's Citizens Bank Wealth. And they actually talk about and all of the investments, the strategies, where the dollars are, what they, you know, are being invested in. So that's really the MS10 report. The MS9 report shows the balances of all those reserve accounts, and they look at what those balances are, and they just try to understand what's going on in the market to make the best decisions for the investment strategies for all the trust funds and the reserves.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
And the reason you have those trustees, because there's very stringent limitations in what they can actually invest city dollars in. You can't be too risky with a lot of these things. But the other part of this action is actually not only identifying where the money comes from to do the work, but actually to do the work. So essentially, when you take the vote, you're directing us to go undertake the work. If you don't want to have the work undertaken, then don't approve the resolution.
Counselor.
Yes, I'm just really confused because I printed off capital reserves in, you know, 34:10, it talks about expenditures, and it does put it under the responsibility of trustees, that they would be responsible for making sure that the vote happened, that it's the separation of duties. Are you saying that, you know, as for cities, the chapter 34 applies?
I'll take a look at it. I believe that we are following the RSAs the way that we're supposed to be following. It's the way that we've been doing it for decades. So the, and the city council is the one that authorizes the transfers in and out. I mean, we don't actually have a trustee that would sit there and go to the bank, do a withdrawal slip, take $3,500 out, go to the other bank. That doesn't happen. That's not practical. The treasurer is the one who actually does those transfers.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, but I, yes, thank you. I was just in a financial policies class, and I actually had other town administrators, elected officials telling me that that is exactly what they do, that it is a trustee of the trust funds that manages the account and that there is a book that they manage and they oversee. So that's why I am surprised that we're not following that.
I'm not surprised that small towns don't have a checkbook that goes underneath somebody's pillow when they go home at night, and they take it out and they write a check and they go and do that.
No, that's not what they were saying.
That is what you, so what we do is very professional, and later on, we're going to be talking about the national award, the international award that the city receives for budgeting and handling its dollars. So I think we can talk about...
I'm just...
I would suggest you vote no on the, and let the neighborhood have to deal with it.
I'm okay with this. I just want to understand the process because I was reading about capital reserves, and I'm looking at what other municipalities like Manchester, Bedford, their trustees of the trust funds also disperse capital reserves, and I did not see that on ours. So that is why I asked it, because we are talking about it more than once during this council meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. LeBron.
You're welcome.
Would anyone like to testify on this? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 33F.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $5,000 in the city council general fund budget for the 2050 Vision facilitation efforts and authorizing the use of $5,000 from the Economic Development Reserve for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
All right. Any questions for the City Manager? I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to testify on this item? Very well, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 33G.
It is a public hearing on social district ballot questions in accordance with House Rule 467.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
All right.
It's just the public to come and talk.
Yeah, just by way of explanation, the city council placed on the November ballot a measure asking the public whether they are in favor of the city allowing social districts. And by statute, we are, we had a public hearing at that time, and by statute, by law, we're required to hold a public hearing on this ballot measure, 15 to 30 days, I believe, before the election, before the vote is taken. And this is the opportunity for the public to testify on social districts. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on social districts? Mr. Schweitzer.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I guess I can't object to the city council putting this on the ballot because I wish more things were on the ballot, like golf clubhouses and so forth. But anyway, that's fine to put it on the ballot, but I'm going to use my chance to be on TV and talk to the public hearing to say why the public should vote against it. And the answer is that we don't yet know how this might work or what's going to happen. And what I would like to say is, okay, let's wait until some business in town proposes a social district, explains what regulations they want to abide by the social district, and then vote on it once they've decided what they want to do. Let the public vote on it after we have an explicit proposal. Because I just have this, you know, nasty feeling that if the public votes it in, then the city will say, okay, the city has always favored businesses over people, we'll let them do it. And there's all sorts of things that might happen. Somebody, you know, once they take their cup of beer and they're out of sight of the business that served it to them, then that business really can't be held responsible for anything they do. So if something happens, who's going to get the blame? Maybe the city, because after all, the city is the one with money. Or I don't know how many city councils know this, I mean, maybe they can afford the bars downtown, but you can get your beer cheaper at Market Basket. So somebody might get one of these cups and put it in their pocket when they're done with it, and then go buy beer at Market Basket and bring it back to an event at Eagle Square, say. So you've essentially lost control over how much people are getting served at all if they're sneaking in their own stuff in these cups. So I think it's a very questionable thing. I think we should wait until we have an explicit proposal and then let the public vote based on that explicit proposal rather than whatever general thing the city might approve that's only going to wind up costing us money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Schweitzer? Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Mr. Schweitzer, you mentioned that you perceive the city favoring business over citizens, and I want a bit of an explanation about that because that's not quite clear to me.
Okay. Well, let me give you a very explicit example. The planning board regulations, for instance, they assume that every person in the city is both an architect and an engineer. When the casino was approved, the applicant showed up with a new report, and the planning board voted on it immediately that night. So no person had a chance to review that report. No person had a chance to say, I wonder about this, I want to hire my own architect here and here and look at it. They just rammed it through. I think the planning board should require that all the documents have got to be submitted 10 days in advance, and if they're not available at the time the agenda is posted, then the hearing is, you know, put off for a month or whenever. So everyone has a chance to review the documents rather than the applicant coming in and showing, you know, something, wave it to the planning board, and then they vote on it immediately, whereas the typical person probably, you know, needs some advice on whether they should do that or not. The zoning board has a policy that after the applicant testifies, the people can testify. There was a hearing where, and it's supposed to be 10 minutes for the applicant and five minutes for the public. Well, there was some applicant who showed up and spent over an hour telling about the merits of his project without getting into, you know, the explicit stuff of this. And when I went up to testify, the applicant gets an hour, but the chairman said, you only get five minutes to deal with all of his points. And I think that, you know, once again, you need to have a regulation that the public gets 50% of the time the applicant is given. And the last thing here is normally in a court case, the parties are given equal time. For the zoning board, the person, the applicant makes testimony, the public can, you know, say what they want about it, and then the applicant can rebut the public's testimony. But the public is not allowed to rebut what the applicant has said to rebut it. And as an example, once again, from the zoning board, there was a situation regarding the Monitor Way project where in the rebuttal, the applicant got up and said, oh, we don't need to reserve this as a industrial site because if you want an industrial site sometime later, you can just create one anywhere in the city. And, you know, the proper rebuttal of that is, yes, but this particular site should be industrial because it has rail service and it's next to high tension power lines, which you cannot just find a place anywhere in the city that has rail service and high tension power lines. But the public is not allowed to rebut the rebuttal, so the applicant gets two talks and the public only gets one. So I think there's two explicit examples of how the city's procedures favor the developer over the individual, and I think I've probably talked long enough, but if you want more, I'll think of some.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Schweitzer? All right. Thank you.
Your Honor, I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. You talked about safety concern and people taking their drink outside. Could you please elaborate a little why you are concerned about that?
Well, I think the answer is that the reason we have laws regarding liquor at all is that people who drink too much liquor can sometimes behave in, let's say, ways that aren't necessarily desirable to the public. And ordinarily, if you have an establishment that serves liquor, they serve it and they can watch the patrons. And if someone, you know, gets too much, they don't give them more, or if somebody, you know, behaves strangely, then they can maybe be held responsible for the conduct of that person if they over-served them. Whereas depending on how your social district is defined, like let's say we define Eagle Square as a social district, you know, someone might buy liquor from one of those establishments, take it to another point in Eagle Square where they're out of view of the establishment. They might give this drink to someone who's underage. They might give it to someone who's already had too many and couldn't buy their own, and the establishment has essentially no control over that. And one finer thing, final thing I will mention is, the whole idea of social districts, in a way, is saying, you really can't have a good time unless you're drinking alcohol. And I don't think that's necessarily a message that the city needs to put out there. I think that there are people in the city who are underage and people in the city who are alcoholics, that more alcohol is not a good thing. So having the city officially endorsing more alcohol is not a good thing. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much. You did.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Welcome.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm Alex Stoy of Revelstoke Coffee right down the street, also pretty heavily involved in a bunch of events here in Concord. And one thing that I really wanted to commend you for is getting this on, or hopefully getting this on the ballot quickly. To my knowledge, we're the first city in New Hampshire with, that's actually on the ballot, which means we have the chance of being the first city to actually enact a social district. I, from my understanding, and you guys might comment on this, it's not like when this gets signed, any business can just do whatever they want. It's going to be a continued suggestion process from you guys on how to follow the guidelines of these social districts, and then businesses have to follow those and apply for them. It's not just going to be like, like all, you know, crazy downtown all of a sudden. So I really want to commend you for getting this on the ballot. I'm so hopeful that it passes. I think that we, Concord, are really becoming well-known as like a destination city for events and nightlife and a good time. And I think that allowing people the freedom to walk down the street during one of our events, maybe with a beer, would be fun and a good thing for our city, when we have these outdoor stages not being limited to this weird little beer garden in the middle of, you know, Main Street, and letting people kind of roam. I'm a big proponent of letting people make their own decisions, and then if there are problems, addressing the problems and not getting caught up in all these problems that could arise before they actually do. So I would, I wanted to give you guys a big pat on the back for getting this on the ballot. Hopefully, I think that would be amazing if we all get the opportunity to vote on it in November. And also, I hope, I would urge the public to let this get through the first step, vote yes, so that we can try to make these social districts make sense in our city. So thank you all.
Any questions for Mr. Stoy? Counselor Foote, then Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a comment relative to coffee and cars. I went a few times this summer, and the September event was just spectacular. The people, I don't know how many thousands of people that attended that, but it was remarkable how you could walk down Main Street from Center Street down to the Capital Center for the Arts, I think it was, and a couple side streets, and there's just thousands of people just enjoying the day in the event. So really nice work relative to that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I promise I will not apply for a social district for Cars and Coffee. It's a bad look.
You won't get drunk with coffee?
It's a bad, yeah, we're going to, we're going to keep those things separate for sure.
Is that Kahlua?
Never, 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 never. Just coffee.
Counselor Keach. Back to him. Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I want to echo what Counselor Foote said. You know, there was some resistance two years ago, particularly from Counselor Brown, that wanted to hold up your project and the, the whole idea of bringing folks out to, on a Sunday, a Sunday morning in particular, but it's been a huge success. And I just wanted to ask you, not only for your business, but can you tell me about the impact that's had with other businesses up and down Main Street?
Yeah, so I walk before the main of... Yeah, so I walk, before the main event, I walk up and down Main Street, and I try to tell everyone that it's happening, and I try to warn everyone, and I, I'm always kind of like braced for, you know, people to say, "Oh, this is, there's going to be no parking, and my customers won't be able to find it." And this year, not one negative comment. I mean, everyone was, at the very least, just saying like, "Oh, cool, like, I'll come check it out." And at most, I had a few businesses, I won't name them, but saying that these events were leading to some of their busiest days of the year. A business down on Store Street, in fact, told me that it was their, by far, their busiest Sunday of the year, and that was not even in the footprint of our event. So it is good, and it is an example of a small event and kind of letting, letting us try something and maybe make a mistake or two, but, you know, if you let us try, I think we can grow these cool things. And I think frankly, we've created like a microeconomy downtown on these second Sundays.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your support.
Sorry. City manager?
So I just want to say, I can affirm exactly what you're saying. I've talked to many of the property owners downtown. They've had the experience, but a lot of it has to do with you and Lindsay, working, working with them, making sure that you listen to what their needs are and taking care of those, and when you, you know, you do what you say you've got to do, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. I should come here more often. This is great. Anyone else? Unrelated compliments. Welcome.
I'm glad you persevered through the people who fought against you.
Thank you.
I can tell you that it can change in a second. Counselor Brown?
Oh, I love this theater. I wish I brought popcorn.
What does that mean?
Well, for...
Counselor, out of order.
Counselor, because you brought up my name, and as did you, Your Honor, I would just like you to know that I had a wonderful conversation with Mr. Stoyl after that meeting, and he said, "I'm okay with hearing from people and, and working through issues." He, I think you remember, we talked about it, that I had said I, I was not opposed to the, to the issue. I wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to learn about it and speak to it. So just for clarification purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, any other questions? Counselor, did you want to speak now, or did you want to...
Whenever you want to recognize me, Your Honor.
Is it, is it relative to this issue?
Not, yes, it is relative to this issue, but not this particular person that testified.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stoyl.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this issue?
Hi, my name's Ben Greenslet. I live at 20 Walker Street. I wasn't originally going to testify on this, but I just wanted to say, I thank you guys for putting this on the ballot. I think this is a really exciting opportunity for the city. I, to my knowledge, I think there's only a couple cities in the country that do something similar to this. I know, you know, New Orleans, of course, and Savannah, Georgia, and I understand that there are going to be trade-offs, positives, benefits to this, but I think that, I had a conversation with Saad Hindal recently, and he was showing a new painting that he made, and it was Concord at nighttime, and the street was empty, and everybody was in bed, and he said, "This was Concord at 7:00 PM." So I think that, you know, this is a really great opportunity, you know, I love Concord, but, you know, when the sun sets, the street's empty out, and I think this is a great opportunity to keep people out. And, you know, I understand there are concerns about alcohol consumption, but, you know, people are going to consume alcohol regardless of whether they're allowed to do that in the street or not. And I just want to say thank you for putting this on the ballot. I think we have a really unique opportunity to kind of be a trendsetter here and to lean into what everybody's been talking about, the fact that we are a destination, and the fact that this is, we can be the, you know, the trendsetter on this. So thank you so much.
Any questions? Counselor Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's more of a comment than a question.
Sure.
Thank you for your testimony. As a point of clarification, just because you use New Orleans as a comparison, voting, for the folks watching from home and in the audience, voting yes for social districts does not blanket allow that in the city of Concord. There's a very, it just allows city council to then create parameters for time, location, date-limited opportunities for social districts to occur as one-offs. I just wanted to clarify, since New Orleans paints a very vivid picture in folks' minds, and that is not where we're headed.
Yeah, being clear, this is just opening the conversation. This isn't setting anything, you know, down, but, and I think that, you know, there's trade-offs, obviously you're going to have to increase enforcement, but I think that the benefits that will be to local businesses and keeping people on the streets after sunset, I think is a, is a very worthy, worthy cause, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris, would you, would you believe that there's more downtown nighttime activity in Concord now than there was 40 years ago?
Oh, I certainly believe that, and I think that's great, and I think that if we continue leaning into that, I think this would help us lean into that.
And would you also believe that many of the downtown evening establishment owners I, I talk to tell me that their biggest challenge is finding help?
Yeah.
And, you know, I was at a local restaurant Saturday, and they had empty tables and people waiting, because they just didn't have enough people in the kitchen, and they didn't have enough people, enough waitstaff to fill all the tables, so.
Yeah.
If we could get more people to work, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, so just wanted to say that, though, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify?
The council and the city mayor, I mean, the city manager and the mayor. How you guys doing?
Good.
I think this is something I've been thinking of lately, and I think we have to lay down some, some of the barriers, and don't get me wrong, I do support this, but it comes with, it comes with other things that we have to talk about and we have to organize. By the way, this is one way of us bringing economy up, and it's going to strengthen our economy, and I'm happy for this. I'm excited that this is going to be a part of the conversation. But let's take a closer look around our community. What I've experienced over the eight years is Concord community. You know, I've seen a lot of people helping others around, personally, like teachers, students, community members, you know, some of the city councils. I've seen, I've seen how much the, the community cares about everybody around us, and, and they call that Concord family. And, and when you, when you take a closer look, what, what is the problem when it comes to disconnections? It's not the people. It's the policies, it's the, the work we do as leaders around our community, that we realize that there's division based on the systems we have in place, right? And this is one of the things we have to talk about. Social district, it does, it does bring a lot of solutions to our community, to make sure that young people stay in our community, making sure that we have, you know, small businesses supported, thriving, and, but we do have other community that most of these opportunities are not common to them. And I think, I think we're a little bit, you know, blinded on that. We don't really include some of the community members that are part of our community, that maybe they might benefit from this, or they might want to be a part of this, or want to enjoy this, right? So, for instance, like economy, economic, bringing economic up, we talk about small businesses, and that's part of this idea. How can we bridge the gaps we have through small businesses? You know, how can we build a stronger community through these opportunities? How can we create safe and more welcoming neighborhoods through these opportunities, right? So I'm specifically, I'm talking about these opportunities because social district brings our economy up, right? But again, some, some members of our community are left out of those opportunities. So I don't, I don't want to speak a lot more about this. Again, I'm so happy that you're discussing about this, because now we get to understand the disconnections we have. If, if, if we give it a time and talk about it and bring the right people on the table and make sure that we're, we're, we're finding community members, we're going to those community members, we're, we're going to the community and talk to the people and, and, and ask them about these opportunities, it's not bad. It's great, because I want to see Concord become alive again, right? And I enjoy Concord, don't get me wrong. So with my, my conclusion, I love this opportunity because it's going to strengthen our local economy, it's going to create welcoming neighborhoods, and, and, and I'm counting on you because you are leaders. Now you're going to take a closer look at the rest of the community. How, how can, how can they be part of this opportunity, right? And that's why I, I think this is going to create safer and welcoming neighborhoods. And we have underserved areas in our community. How can we expand that? Are we only talking about, talking about downtown? We have the Heights, right? And, and something I've learned about when it comes to economy, the other side of our community, the Heights, they're, they're not, there's no opportunity for young people that are growing up in those areas, or families that are growing up in those areas, to dream, right? The only way to keep somebody from opportunities is to lock them in an area where there's no, you know, there's no place to sit outside to enjoy coffee, a space where people can network, a space where kids can spend their time on, on, on Main Street without having to worry about traffic, right? So basically, if we have young people that are growing up on, on that side, the Heights, they don't have that much opportunity to dream as any, any other young people that are growing up on this side. So if we're trying to create these opportunities, how can we bridge the gaps? How can we make sure that our streets are more safer and accessible? How can we make sure that the Heights and, and the downtown becomes one? Because again, Concord is, is one community. It's one family. I, I see everybody in Concord as one family. We're, we're only separated by, by policies we have in place, and this is going to be one of the issue. So I want you to judge based on the community we have, not, not what you desire. Reach out to those community members. Go out, find them, talk to them, because you have to go where they are. And, and there's specific way of reaching out to some, some people, you know, depends on their background, their understanding, their language. I speak five languages. If, if you want me to communicate with you culturally, you know, if you want me to communicate with you as I would communicate with, with my young brother, with my, with my parents or with my relatives, I would have to speak my language. I would have to access the language that, that I understand. It goes with culture. Culture is different. Understanding is different. When it comes to systems, we have different understanding about all the structures. So I don't want to go far to this, I know, I don't want to lose my, my point, but I want you to understand that it's not going to end right here, right now, here, where you're sitting. This, this is going, is going to end in the homes of the people that elected you. They're the one who's going to make decisions whether we have social district or we don't have social district, not us. I'm saying us because I think I'm a, I'm a community leader. I've been, I've been present in the community, and I want to show up as a leader because I want to speak for the people. I want you to hear me, my ideas, not because they are perfect or better than anybody here, but because I'm speaking from experience, and I'm speaking from the heart, and I'm speaking for the people that, that, that doesn't have a voice or are not able to show up and speak, because this is exactly what they would tell you. So get out and talk to the people and make decisions that people support, not what you make, you decide upon. So thank you for your, for your time. That's the end of my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Dent.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to ask a question? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify? All right, Counselor Kurtz. Counselor Schultz, I'm sorry.
Loving the upgrade. Thank you, Your Honor. I know you know my name. It's okay. I just wanted to take a moment to say that State Representative Meryl Gibbs of Concord had hoped to be here tonight to testify and give a snapshot of the many hours of testimony that happened at the State House, because she serves on the Commerce Committee, and my conversation with her was enlightening, but she's ill and could not make it tonight. So I just wanted to let folks who are listening or watching know that State Rep. Meryl Gibbs, two Rs in Meryl, please look her up if you would like to reach out to her on her official page, with her email and her phone number. She would love to give a very balanced snapshot of the testimony that they heard, which then led to this being allowed. And I will say also thank you to, to Counselor Kurtz for her clarification on the New Orleans point, because I don't think that was anyone's intention ever for Concord to have, or in New Hampshire in general. But that is it. So please do reach out to her if you would like to hear a balanced snapshot of the many hours that the State House had to look at this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Schultz. I'll close the public hearing on this item. Madam City Clerk, item 33H.
It is a public hearing on Keno. Valid question in accordance with House Bill 737.
City manager, anything? No, sir. All right. Is there anyone who would like to, again, this is a public hearing required by statute, and we are not taking any action on it. Is anyone who would like to testify? Mr. Schweitzer?
Okay, folks, I promise this is the last one tonight. And as far as Keno itself goes, I mean, it's a way of getting money out of the people who can least afford it, so overall, it's not something I generally support. I think, you know, maybe they should be allowed to be foolish if they want to, but my real concern with this is, once again, here we have the legislature telling us what to do. I mean, we had a vote on Keno, we voted no. We could at any time vote to have another vote on it, but no, the legislature's going to approve it unless we have another no vote. And I think we should pass this on to our representatives, that we're tired of having the legislature tell us what to do, once we've already, you know, said what to do. So I think that, you know, that's what I would say, is I would vote no on this, simply because I'm tired of the legislature trying to tell us what to do. And I'll add one more irrelevant comment. I hope that if social districts are approved and we have a committee to look into them, that the mayor will appoint a committee that are for and against social districts in proportion to the number of people that voted each way on it, rather than having a committee that's all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. It's been good to see you tonight. Is anyone else, is there anyone else who'd like to testify on Keno? Very well. Hearing is closed. This moves us to the public hearing action of our meeting. I'll just note that we will not be taking any vote on the last two items, the public, the social district ballot question or the Keno ballot question. These, those public hearings were held strictly because they were required by statute. Madam City Clerk, item 34. I'm sorry, Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. May I make a comment on Keno, given that we are not going to have a discussion period?
Uh, I will allow you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify again for folks at home that the way these ballot items are written is that if you want social districts to be considered by Concord City Council, you would be voting yes. And if you want to prevent Keno from happening in Concord, you would vote, let me clarify the language because it is unclear, so it's gonna say, shall we prohibit the operation of Keno games within the city of Concord? Shall we prohibit? Yes. So yes on social districts allows them, yes on the Keno item prohibits Keno, which is currently what we have in Concord. I think that's important for folks to be able to watch and rewind and hear again prior to being in the voting booth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's a clarification, not necessarily an advocacy.
Correct. No, I am not speaking to either issue. They're ballot items for the constituents to vote upon. I just want folks to be educated and understand exactly what it is they are voting for, and these are confusing. And they're going to be right next to each other. So I, I just, it's just an educational moment. Thank you for allowing it, Mr. Mayor.
That's quite all right. All right, Madam City Clerk, item 34.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Parking Prohibited at All Times in Designated Places, to modify parking requirements on Pleasant Street between Langley Parkway and the intersection with Hopkington and Dunbar Roads.
Do you have a motion?
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'll just say that the folks who live across the street actually did come late and they had just left. I, as the report states, I did meet with the Birch's, I did speak with them about concerns, and they were amenable to this, and I'm gonna continue to work with them going forward.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item 35.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, zoning code, chapter 28, by amending Article 28 to Zoning Districts and allowable uses, Section 28-2-K, Table of accessory uses, use number 13 accessory dwelling unit, Article 28-5 supplemental standards, Section 28-5-52, single-family detached dwellings with one accessory dwelling unit, Article 28-9 administration and enforcement, Section 28-9-4 decisions by the planning board, Section 28-9-4F architectural design review and the glossary.
Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counselor Kurtz.
Yes, thank you. Well, I am very excited that the state RSA changed and that the city of Concord has written an ordinance to bring us in compliance with that, and I believe that these changes to ADUs are going to be incredibly beneficial to the city. I'm deeply concerned about the change made by the planning board, and I was wondering if it would be appropriate to ask for more information from our representative who was present at that discussion. Do you allow it?
Counselor, would you like to respond?
Counselor Todd, could you let us know what the planning board was thinking? And removing the owner occupancy requirement, that neither of the properties needs to be occupied by an owner.
Well, I don't, I hesitate to speak on behalf of the whole board.
Sure.
I think that the, the, the general thinking was that since the state has, for lack of a better word, kind of imposed this on municipalities anyway, that the planning board felt that this is probably the best way to move forward with that, to allow, to allow the, the intent and the interest of the, of the state's recommendation to move forward in the best possible way. I think, I think that was generally what, what they were looking at, that the intent is to try to loosen up these regulations to allow for the greatest possible flexibility. And I think the planning board probably felt that that would, that this would do that.
I have a follow-up question, but it's not for Counselor Todd.
Okay.
Okay, well, unless he happens to know it. Do we have any ordinances protecting against short-term rental use of an accessory dwelling unit or primary property in the city of Concord?
No.
Not.
Then I would like to say that I'm deeply concerned about the potential abuse of this ordinance as written.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, do we have the ability to levy impact fees as Mr. Schweitzer suggested? Or would this need to go back to the planning board for that?
I, I'm not sure what the structure would be to levy an impact fee.
You, you have, you have, already have impact fees.
For, that would apply for this?
You have impact fees for residential, so, but it would only cover, I believe, recreation and, is it recreation? And transportation. But not, not, you can, obviously, there's a whole slew of things you could charge impact fee for, but this would be for recreation and transportation.
If I, if we wanted to do as Mr. Schweitzer suggests, I actually, I think that's a great idea because I do know the premium of parking. If we wanted to impose impact fees for parking purposes to go to the parking fund, what would we need to do?
If we were to do that, I would be most comfortable re-referring it back to the planning board so that they can take a close look at it rather than trying to do it in ad hoc nature around this table. Counselor Schlosser.
I have two comments. One, I thought we had set up some sort of review process of impact fees. Is there a committee or a group looking at impact fees?
There is a committee that is chaired by Counselor.
I would, I would defer that issue to the, the group that's reviewing impact fees. That's my first comment. May I make a second comment?
Yeah.
So I had a concern that, similar to Mr. Schweitzer, about the prohibition of manufactured housing. And I was surprised today that actually there's special definitions in, in state law about manufactured housing versus pre-site housing, because I thought that the notion of having sort of off-site manufactured certain components of housing can be efficient, and that's called pre-site housing, and it's defined specifically in state law. So this ordinance does not prohibit pre-site housing, structures that are manufactured off-site, only specifically the kind of long body, forty-foot-long manufactured housing that we think in terms of, of mobile home type thing. So anyway, I was clarified that today because I think the notion of using certain off-site construction of certain components can actually speed construction as we're seeing in the state parking garage across the street, so I just want to clarify that.
Counselor Fennessey.
Thank you. As the person who actually made the motion, I think this is a good change. If we want to make housing more available and affordable for residents of the community, we should be taking advantage of all of the opportunities to create accessible dwelling units. We've got many parts of the city where you've got either garages or barns or, or other structures that without this would require residents to go through a, a very long process to get approval, to, to make those into housing. And if we want to increase housing stock, particularly in parts of the city that are pretty constrained, this is a great opportunity for us to do so. So I compliment the planning boards for moving so quickly and putting this together, particularly since the law just barely took effect. So I strongly support this and think we should move forward with it. Thank you.
Counselor Cage.
Thank you. Just a question for Counselor Kurtz. Was your concern like Airbnb abuses?
Yes, Airbnb, my, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, since, well, I want to second everything that Counselor Fennessey said. We have had too many barriers to the sort of things that would more quickly help us have access to housing in Concord and in many places in New Hampshire. If you happen to know the people who sponsored the bill that led to this, that is not typically a group that agrees with each other. They also had concerns about Airbnb-type uses too. I don't know, I can't speak to that other than, from what I understand, the assessments that have been made thus far of Concord, correct me if I'm wrong, typically have looked at out-of-state purchasing of land. And as far as I understand, Concord isn't one of those communities that has had a buy-up of land from people outside of the state that would potentially be considered, the types of organizations that we know have done this in other places. So I realize that's anecdotal, please take that as anecdotal, but I strongly support this because I know it is among the things that, and to clarify for my friend, oh, he's not here, goodness, I'll have to email him. Mr. Schweitzer referenced, it tends to be the business community, free staters, and the majority of progressive and moderate Democrats, who typically don't agree on anything, have formed a coalition to look at zoning, parking, et cetera, laws as a way to give more access to more, the most quickest path, the quickest pathway to build more housing. So I couldn't be a stronger supporter of this, and I'm glad to vote in support of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we send this back to the planning board simply to address impact fees for parking on the parking committee. This is something that we've dealt with where there are homes that were older, that were converted, and we're fighting with parking. I don't see it as a barrier, but I see that it could build the coffers up for our parking fund so that we could address it in the neighborhood in a different way. So I would just, I, my motion is to send this back to the planning board to address or craft impact fee language for parking.
Counselor, we have a motion on the floor already.
This is an amendment.
So you're voting, you, you are?
I'm making an amendment to the motion.
Making a motion to amend the current motion?
The current motion is to accept this report? Is that correct? Yes, so this is, is an amendment to send it to the planning board.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. It's a discussion on the motion for the amendment, Counselor Kurtz. Counselor Schultz, damn it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to say that is an example of the sort of barriers to having housing that would, I would think would actually stifle the ability to have ADUs. I think that we should support this as it's been presented without amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion?
May I, did you say with the amendment?
Without.
Oh, I oppose it because it's another requirement that would slow down the development of ADUs.
Counselor Fennessey.
I just want to say, I agree with Counselor Schultz on everything she just said.
Second. And I, I will say that I agree with Counselor Schultz too. I mean, I think it's a well-intentioned idea, but, you know, I, I think it's another barrier. And again, I, I talked with a, a woman I know today, I, I'll talk about that later. But I'm, I'm gonna move the question. So all those in favor of, this is of the motion to amend to refer to the planning board, I believe, right? Yes.
Planning board, yeah.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
All right, the motion fails. We're back to the original motion, which is to approve. Let me comment, if I may, on Counselor Kurtz's concerns. I share your concerns about, about temporary use of, of structures. To me, this is a broader question. I'm not sure what parameters we have under state statute to make any limitations on short-term rentals and things like that. If we were to address that, I would prefer to do it comprehensively because I agree with you, it's, it's a, it's a challenge. There are, there's at least one property in my neighborhood that is, you know, a, a family, a single-family home that is an Airbnb. And so it's off the market for families that need a permanent place to live. So if we were to address that, and again, I do not know what, what latitude we have under state statute, I would prefer to do it more comprehensively. So I will be voting in favor of the motion.
We have, he.
Counselor Kurtz and then Counselor Fennessey.
I just, I had a point of clear, a question, but I don't know if Mr. Walsh is allowed to answer at this point of the evening or if I missed my opportunity to ask it.
Staff answer a question?
What's the question?
The question is, does the state RSA, which has just been passed, override anything we would say at the city level at this moment anyway, such that if we did not pass this tonight, individuals would be able to build ADUs?
I think so.
Regardless of the language of this ordinance?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
Yes.
So then I'll just follow up and say that we don't need to rush something if we think it has imperfect language. We're not throwing barriers up to individuals where they're allowed to do what they want, and we can then consider whether or not owner occupation is a necessary safeguard that we believe will benefit the residents of Concord who live in neighborhoods with large houses and garages that should be owned by residents of Concord who care about the city and who want to age in place or house their adolescent, you know, young adult children who can afford a home without letting those properties be bought up by out-of-staters who will then flip them both and rent them to folks without any care about what happens in our communities.
Counselor Fennessey then, Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you. So I just pulled up Airbnb because I was curious. I see eight places that I can rent for next weekend. At least two or three of them appear to be hotels that are putting it up on Airbnb. So I have been involved with short-term rentals in a lot of different places. I love Concord very much. We are not really a short-term rental destination.
Not yet.
Well, unless we're gonna get a lake or an ocean, I don't think we're gonna be anytime soon. Unless Pennycreek Lake becomes, you know, the next big thing. So I, I have heard this concern about everything's gonna buy up, and I, I have not seen it. I think there are places that have traditionally had short-term rentals like Lake Sunapee, where it's gone on for 150 years, maybe more. And I, I just don't see it having a significant impact on housing stock here. It has an impact in a place like New York City perhaps, where, you know, people are coming in and they want to go around. Most of the people that I see coming into Concord are not staying, or staying here maybe for work, but they're passing through, going somewhere else. So I don't have that concern at this point. Obviously, if we see it as an issue, then I, obviously, we can address it down the line, but I would be reluctant to try and impose barriers at this point to try and solve a problem that we don't have.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yeah, I would just like to, thank Your Honor, I'd like to offer another perspective about how the value of short-term rentals. I think that we are constantly faced with shortages for emergency personnel in communities where we have some sort of emergency situation, as well as traveling nurses, doctors who come in on a temporary basis. We also have people who just love the city of Concord and want to come and spend some money downtown, as well as out-of-state grandparents, caregivers. So I do think that I am personally comfortable with this, and I don't think that it's gonna, it's going to be a huge attraction for.
Counselor Kurtz.
I actually agree with everything Counselor Grady Sexton said, and I, my primary concern is not abuse of short-term rentals when there's an owner living on the property. My concern is a slumlord situation where an out-of-stater buys up two properties, can do whatever they want with them, to maximize their profits with little care. I'm done now because it's clear how this is going to go, and I hope we don't come back here trying to fix a problem that we allowed to happen.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown?
I would like to say that there is a house a block away from me that is used for Airbnb, and I hear from the neighbors regularly that they are, that it's awful because the, they have, you know, people who are renting this house and they're playing loud music, they don't, they don't care, they're here for a short period of time, where if there is an owner in the building, they are more concerned with the neighborhood, with the neighbors, with working with the neighbors. So I absolutely agree with Counselor Kurtz's point, and, you know, in the West Side and Ward Five, we have a lot of beautiful old homes, and I can absolutely see that happening, having these old homes be bought up, reconfigured, so they could be Airbnb. having these old homes be bought up, reconfigured, so they could be Airbnb, and then the people who, who live here in maybe smaller homes are suffering by being around a lot of short-timers. And we, we do have a draw, the State House, how many rallies have we had, where we have a lot of people, and we have coffee and cars? So, you know, we do have a lot of people coming to Concord.
Thankfully.
Counselor Horn?
Do we have a definition of manufactured housing? Because you came up with a different...
It's in state statute.
Yeah.
It's in state statute.
Oh, the state statute for ADUs includes it? And we just have, oh...
I think it's separately defined.
Yeah, yeah, manufactured housing is separately defined.
Right, so I'm curious how it got into this, into ours, manufact, like how we're prohibiting manufactured housing.
I believe the state statute prohibits manufactured housing. Am I correct? Counselor Schultz?
I would refer to the folks actually looking at the law than me, but I'm pretty sure that's true.
Are we, are you still looking for something, Counselor Fantasy? Are we ready for the question?
I'm ready whenever you are.
All right. All those in favor of the motion?
You should probably roll call.
All those in, I'm sorry?
Roll call.
A roll call has been requested. Madam Clerk, please, by Counselor Schultz, please call the roll.
Counselor Schultz?
I'm confused. Yes.
Motion, yeah, the motion is to approve.
Yes.
Counselor Seku?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Mayor Jimplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Foot?
No.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Horn?
No.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz?
No.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor McNamara?
Yes.
And Counselor Schlosser?
Yes.
So, if my math is right, it passes 10 to 4. I knew it was going to pass.
All right, thank you. Madam City Clerk, item 36.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $260,000 for fire department wages and benefits, and authorizing an increase to the amount to be raised in taxes in the amount of $260,000 in the general fund for this purpose.
Have a motion. Move and approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, okay. It's a discussion. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I feel that this is a small sum, and it may be a whole, but when I look at January, when we transferred 3,790,000 unassigned funds into different buckets for the unassigned fund balance, typically, when it goes into an unassigned fund, or it goes to an assigned fund, it is for a specific purpose. And we had, yes, a million and a half that went to paving, 500,000 to HR, we had 400,000 go to Recreation Reserve, 300,000 to Economic Development. I think 260,000 is well-spent, coming from the unassigned fund balance, without having to increase the tax rate. So, I make a motion that we pull 260,000 from the unassigned fund balance.
Are you making, are you moving an amendment to...
I'm making a motion.
There's a motion on the floor, Counselor.
To accept the report. Then it is an amendment to the report.
All right. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, moved and seconded. It's a discussion. Counselor Horn?
When we were discussing this earlier, said we would have to raise taxes next year to account for the 260,000, which isn't necessarily true, we would just have to perhaps lower spending in other areas, increase our economic development, and increase our, our, increase getting money in other areas. So, I think because of that, we've already approved a certain tax rate, that's what the community expects from us, and I think that 260,000 from our unassigned fund is not a lot.
Thank you. Further discussion? Although, all those in favor, please signify by saying...
Nathan.
Nate, I'm sorry?
Thank you. I will not be supporting this amendment. I don't think it's a good practice to use your savings account to pay operating expenses, that generally is not a good means of doing business, or operating even a household. So, this is wages that we negotiated, we understood that there would be an additional economic impact as a result of it, so I think it should go as part of the tax rate, and I don't think we should dip into what amounts to our savings account to pay for these operating expenses. Next year, obviously, you know, we can take a look, hopefully, it will have less of an impact, but I suspect, given what we negotiated, there's going to be an additional increase for all our employees, so I think if you don't pay for it now, it's actually going to have a increased impact next year, because not only do you have to pick up the 260 that you didn't do this year, you're going to have to get the raises on top of that. So, rather than, you know, an increase of 260,000, it's going to be whatever that total number is.
Counselor Keach?
Just to make it more concise, it's going to be exponential, it's going to compound, right? So, yes, I agree with Counselor Fantasy.
Counselor Kurtz?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Fantasy, and I think that as painful as it is, and difficult as it is for this council to sit here and add yet another tax burden, we also voted for this contract. We negotiated it, and we have to accept responsibility for the impact of that, and so we did make a decision to increase wages for our firefighters, which I stand behind, and we have to pay for that.
Any other discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yes, I just, you know, I'm looking at the consent agenda item that I had pulled that talks about using the fund balance, and I'm just surprised that we're talking about using it for an accounting error, but we're not going to use it for, we're going to increase taxes instead, and say it's to cover the wages of firefighters. I feel that the unassigned fund balance is for this purpose. If we, we distributed $3 million, and we didn't have set funds, we have 299,000 for equipment, 300,000 for economic development, there wasn't a specific reason for those things. This is something specific. I think this is a wise use of our funds, and I think our taxpayers would be deeply grateful.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, your honor. May I just ask a question? Do we know how much the tax rate is projected to go up attached to this? I just...
City Manager?
About a half a percent.
A half a percent? Thank you.
Yeah, a little more than half a million dollars is a 1% tax rate increase. Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a renter, whose rent increases have been massive, in that when our tax rate goes back down, rent never decreases, I will be supporting this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sexton?
Thank you, your honor. I just want, because earlier the City Manager tried to explain, when we take this fund now, how much that will be coming next year, how much we need to raise. So, I would love for you, please, to take this opportunity to explain to us, there is no way to avoid this, because even if we take it part of that fund, we still have to reimburse that, that's, is that correct?
That's correct. You'd have to take, you have to take this, same, plus a little bit more next year. Essentially, this is, the question is, do you want to do more deficit funding? I mean, this is deficit budgeting, you're going to end up taking dollars out of here for a reoccurring cost. We've always coached against doing that, you can always do it if you like, but you realize you're going to, you got to pay the piper one way or the other down the line, you could put it off, maybe because the time of year it is, but this is, this is not something you've tried to do in the past. You've always tried to be upfront with the taxpayer and say, hey, we, our firefighters deserve these raises, they should be paid this, and we want to be competitive, we're going to have to pay those, pay those wages, and this goes forward. If that's not the case, then that's not the case.
Follow-up, Counselor Sexton?
Thank you, your honor. Just to follow up, to build on what Counselor Grady Sexton said about the tax increase, if we were to do, to take part of that fund, how are you projecting to raise the tax next year? Because now you said it might be 0.5, right?
You wouldn't have to raise it next year.
If we use...
You'd do it now.
As an amendment.
That's right.
Thank you.
Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But isn't the answer actually, to his question, we as a council, or whoever the next council is, actually, is the more appropriate, whoever's in the next council would be making that decision, it's not automatic, correct?
What's an automatic?
It would be suggested to us, in the answer that was given, that it would be something that we automatically would do, when in fact, that would be an additional decision that we would vote on, assuming we are the next council.
Whatever the council raises for taxes is always up to the next council, what you'd like to do. That's true of every que, of every year that you go through that, so there's nothing...
Therefore...
Follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, so then the correct answer to that question would be, it depends on what the next council decides. I just want to clarify, so that we know that it isn't a done deal, it's something that we would, the next council would have to vote on.
The next council would say, we're going to give everybody a 5% tax reduction. Sure they could.
True. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, I will be voting against the motion, the motion which is to cover the firefighter's pay raise differential by withdrawing money from the unassigned fund balance.
Roll call, your honor.
May I finish, Counselor?
Of course, please.
Sure.
I guess so.
Thank you, that's very kind of you. And I, I'm going to vote against, against the amendment, because, as the City Manager has noted, I mean, we certainly could down the road, you know, next year, you know, we could certainly make significant reductions in city services, that would not require us to, you know, raise taxes in order to pay for next year's 4% pay raise increase, which is, we're contractually obligated to...
5%.
5%? 4%?
5% for five.
Five? Okay. Anyway, so we, we, thank you. We certainly could make reductions. I think we saw during this year's budget process, how difficult it is to make reductions without cutting services. You know, we could certainly maintain next year's pay raise, as well as make up the 260,000 for this year's pay raise, by eliminating firefighter positions. But what I'm hearing from the firefighters is that they're stressed already, because they have five vacancies, and, you know, I don't know if that's something that we want to do, and that also would mean pulling equipment out. There are other things that we could, you know, make equally draconian decisions about, and we, we will, you know, those of us who are back, you know, next, next spring, will make those decisions. But to my mind, it's prudent right now to make an incremental increase in the current tax rate, in order to cover this, to cover this overage due to the contract negotiation, so that next year's City Council doesn't have to be burdened with also making decisions about how to cover this money. So, I hear, I've had a request for a roll call. Madam City Clerk, please call, just to clarify, the motion is to amend, the motion to approve to pay for the 260,000 from the undesignated fund balance.
Counselor Brown?
I think Counselor Horn, I had a question, but I don't know if it's too late.
What's your question?
Do we have a general idea of the unassigned fund balance, what the balance is?
No, I don't.
It's 15 million, over 15 million.
I think, is it over 15 million, Mr. LeBran?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, so I apologize, it's about 15.1 million. We'll have a report coming to the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee in November, along with the ACFR presentation by our city auditors. That report will show that the unassigned fund balance is at, will be at 20.7%, which is just a very slight amount above the city's goal of 20.5%. So, you'll have that information, will come forward to the City Council in the December meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Madam...
Go ahead.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Jimplin?
No.
Counselor Fantasy?
No.
Counselor Foot?
No.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
No.
Counselor Horn?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
No, and unlike our cousins on the school board, I think having a surplus is a really good idea.
Counselor Kurtz?
No.
Counselor McLaughlin?
No.
Counselor McNamara?
No.
Counselor Schlosser?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Seku?
No.
And Counselor Todd?
No.
The motion fails.
Motion fails. Now, on the table is the original motion to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously, by the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item 37.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $53,000 to include $50,000 in the golf fund, and $3,000 in the arena fund, for fiscal year 2025 retroactive to June 30th, 2025, to be funded from excess revenues in the golf fund and fund balance in the arena fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it, by the, the motion passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item 38.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $3,500 for nuisance abatement at 30 Pennycook Street in Concord, and authorizing the use of $3,500 from the Community Improvement Reserve for this purpose.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Let me just comment and say that I have heard from neighbors of this property, who were very concerned about its state of repair, and about the state of the property in general, and I think they'll be very happy once this cleanup takes place. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item 39.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $5,000 in the City Council General Fund Budget, for the 2050 Vision Facilitation Efforts, and authorizing the use of $5,000 from the Economic Development Reserve for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. We now have a report, I believe, Mr. City Manager?
We do. I'd suggest you take a two-minute break, because we've got, this will be another half-an-hour to 45-minute report.
All right, the Chair, Chair orders.
No, I'll wait.
This is the police station.
I'm not going to stay.
I'm going to call the meeting back to order.
This is City Manager.
So we have a presentation by Beth Fenstermacher, who will lead us through this for the Fort Booten Street project. And I have handouts, I'll come around and give you all the handouts. And then everything you see in this handout will be on the city's website tomorrow.
Thank you. Great. While Tom takes care of that, thank you all. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Beth Fenstermacher, Director of Special Projects with Community Development. I'm working with Chief Osgood and our Deputy Chiefs on this new police station project. Also have here tonight J. Burgess, Public Properties Superintendent, and Matt Bolio from Milestone, who is our construction manager for the project. Our goal tonight is to talk you through the report that's being handed around right now with the hope that a public hearing is set for November 10th meeting to appropriate construction funds to move forward with the schedule that we've outlined in previous presentations. But we wanted to walk you through because it's a lot of information. It's only 20 pages long, so you'll have some good reading. But hopefully you have a chance to read it after tonight and come up with any questions that you have a month to get to us so that when we come for, before you on the public presentation, during the public hearing, we have the best answers for you for that night so you can make the best decision. So that's our goal with this presentation tonight is walk you through the report, let you know what information we have, and then you can get back to us what, what additional information you would like us to present at the future meeting. That being said, so I'm just going to quickly go through the timeline of how we've gotten to where we are tonight. So it goes way back to the 70s. A 1978 report said in the year 2000, the existing police station would no longer meet the needs of a police department. So studies were conducted in the early 2000s but were halted due to the recession in 2008. So everything was on hold for either expanding the police station or moving to a new location until about 2019. And facilities needs assessment and space planning study determined that the existing location was not sufficient. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but up to this point, we've talked a lot about the 2021 study, the H.L. Turner study, that led us to the decision that we needed to find a new location in the city for a police station. So in 2023, council appropriated funds for a site selection study. However, an opportunity to purchase the Fort Booten Street location came about because Concord Group was relocating outside of Concord. So we repurposed that site selection study for due diligence for the acquisition of that property. In December of '23, city council approved Resolution 9604 to enter into a purchase and sales agreement for the Fort Booten Street property for the purpose of a new police station. And then following the due diligence activities in April of '24, council authorized the city manager to move forward with that property acquisition. And you were presented at that time with two options, either to demolish the existing building and build a brand-new facility, or to reuse the existing facility, repurpose it, and build in addition to accommodate a new police station. Council at that time opted for option two, which is to save the iconic mid-century modern building and repurpose it for a police station. We acquired the property in May of '24, and then in June, as part of the FY25 funding, council appropriated funds for the design of the new police station at Fort Booten Street. Following that, we went out to RFP. We hired a construction manager, Milestone, our local construction management company that's done a lot of work with the city, and the design team was selected through an RFP process, so that's Harriman Architects out of Portsmouth. Between January and May, the design team worked to diligently determine what the best programming for the police station would be and to start to come up with schematic designs for the addition and the reuse of the building. We presented to the Heritage Commission in May. The property is located adjacent to the historic district, but also it's a historic building, so we wanted their input on the exterior finishes, and also went before Architectural Review Committee in June of 2025. All of those were public meetings. And then in July of 2025, hopefully you all remember, we were before you with those schematic design plans and a schematic design level cost estimate that we presented to you. So that brings us to today. I'm going to review a lot of information, hopefully. At this point, you're pretty well aware of why we've gotten to this point, of why we need a new police station, but I'll go through it quickly. Right now, the police are located right next to us, Green Street. It's about a 20,000-square-foot building constructed in 1975. It's four stories, including the basement. They're servicing about 45,000 residents. Our population doubles during the day, so not only are they serving our residents, but they're servicing 90,000-plus people that come and work in the city every day. They have about 50,000 calls per year. Right now, there's 90 sworn officers and 26 full and part-time civilians. Briefly, the 2021 study or the needs assessment found that the current design of the facility severely limited renovation options. So it's been brought up that that study said 27,000 square feet would be appropriate for a new police department. That sort of is based on the limitations of the existing site itself. So what could they do for that day? The most they could do was 27,000 square feet, so that's where that number came from in 2021. There's insufficient real estate around the existing facility to expand to meet the future needs. And that's what we're talking about, is the future needs in addition to the current needs. There's a lot of adjacency issues and separation of spaces, and I have Chief Osgood here tonight. If he, if you have any specific questions about any of these issues, feel free to let us know, or you can raise your hand or interrupt. But this hinders some state and national accreditation challenges that we have. There's a lack of secure dedicated parking. Most of you probably have walked through their parking area. The public walk through it often, so it definitely poses a security concern for the police officers. And at the same time, we're throwing out of room at the, at City Hall, so there's space needs within the municipal campus as well that could be addressed by relocating the police department to another facility. Briefly, you've presented, been presented with this information in the past, but this just shows you the upward trend of the city's population and service calls. It continues to go up. There has been noticed that there's been a dip in some of the service calls, but the chief can talk about how the service calls have actually started to change, where they're a lot more intense. So the numbers going down doesn't necessarily represent the amount of work that the police officers have to deal with on a daily basis. And these are the numbers that we use to start to project how we would grow 20, 25, 50 years into the future. And this just talks about the number of staff, and the projections are based off of the growth that's occurred since 1980, between 1980 and 2023. The orange is the non-sworn personnel or civilian personnel, and blue is the sworn So our projection, virtually this was done as part of the 2024 study to talk about what do we need, what's the population projected to grow? The population growth is based on projections between 1980 and 2023, and this aligns with the city's master plan as well, so these are numbers that other planning in the city is looking at. And we're looking at the, the calls for services increasing, almost doubling into the future. And then looking at the number of sworn officers and non-sworn personnel. And even since, as the department starts to change, type of officers or personnel that's needed. So the social workers, that's a new department within the city that has grown a lot. Computer crimes has grown significantly. So as modern policing changes, the type and number of personnel will also change. So that's something that's accounted for as we move forward in this. So this brings us to Fort Booten Street, the site that was selected for the new police station. I'm just going to go through just some reminders of what we're dealing with. So it's a 2.16-acre site located at North State Street and Booten Street. It's currently at a lighted intersection. There's about 700 feet of frontage, currently 113 parking spaces. It's an existing about 38,000-square-foot building. It's a quality example of mid-century modern architecture, and that was one of the reasons that we felt it was important to save that building. Some of the strengths that were identified during the due diligence process when council decided to purchase the building for a police station was it's centrally located, it's inside the urban growth boundary, it's easily accessible to major transportation routes, it's a mile from the city campus, it's adjacent to fire department headquarters, it's a large enough lot for expansion. There's three driveways, so there's plenty of access to and from the site itself. It has access to all the major utilities that already exist on the site, and at that time, we had a willing seller, so that helped make that decision easier. Some of the considerations that we knew would be challenges as we entered into this project was the triangle-shaped lot, so it was a little less efficient site layout, so we've definitely had some challenges with how we were able to lay out parking in the building addition. Knowing it was a historic building, not only did we have to try to match the materials to maintain that same historic building aesthetic, but the structure, structural integrity, some of the existing mechanical equipment needed to be replaced, so a lot of challenges that come along with purchasing and renovating a 60-year-old building. There's also the challenges similar to what we have here on campus, but long-term future expansion is limited based on the development around the site already, and we are adjacent to the historic district, so you're limited of where you can expand within that area. Some of the building assessment findings that we were able to use as moving forward with the design and reuse of the building. So the structural components were good and reusable. Air conditioning at that time was considered to be reusable, but we are now moving forward with a more energy-efficient HVAC program, so it was, some of that equipment was actually repurposed, and we were able to save money on a chiller for the library by salvaging the existing chiller out of this building and moving it to the library. So that saved about $120,000 for the city by being able to reuse that. So those are some of the cost-saving things that we're looking at as we go through with this project. Some of the things that we knew that we would have to replace that would have cost implications were the electrical system, the water service and plumbing, heating, ventilation, doors and windows. As you can see, that image of the windows are starting to show some wear and tear around them. That's existing glass on the facade of the building. Those were some challenges that we knew that we had to replace those. The roof had some strength issues of what it could withstand as far as any additions on the roof or adding any solar or green roof to it would pose challenges. We'd have to replace the fire system and upgrade telecommunications. We'd have to install, we have to install a sprinkler system. There was no existing sprinkler system. There was ADA compliance issues, which we have to address as part of the design, and a lack of insulation. So these are things that added to the design cost and challenges of repurposing that building. So the fun part, the design process. So once we had our design team on board, we had the Harriman Architects and Milestone, we were able to go through and revisit the space needs studies from 2021 and 2024 that was presented to you a couple of years ago, and then looking at beyond the 20-year growth, looking at the 50-year growth. If we're going to invest this much money, this is a multi-generational progress, excuse me, project, so we want to make sure that we can expand for at least 50 years and make sure this building serves our city for at least 50 years and hopefully beyond. So we revisited some of the numbers, looking at some national standards, and you'll see that the existing Green Street facility is about 20,000 square feet. In 2024, we were looking at 52,000 square feet, and this is gross square footage, so that includes hallways, mechanical spaces, any of the circulation associated with that. Some of the previous information that's been out there says the number 44,000, that's the usable square foot. So this kind of gives you that, that larger number of what the actual building would have to be besides just the spaces themselves. So that's what these numbers are showing. And then with the 50-year growth, we were looking about 59,000 or 60,000 square feet would be needed for growing into the future for current trends in policing. Some of the things that have impacted what the size of the new building is going to be is we have to meet certain building codes. So the IBC, International Building Code, risk category four sets up regulations for critical facilities. So it requires more robust structure to withstand extreme environmental loads, so such as earthquakes and hurricanes, and also it requires redundant building systems. So we'd have to have two electrical services, two water services, two boiler plants, and two separate HVAC systems. So these are things that were not considered in those original studies moving forward because we have critical facilities within this building itself. Also, reusing the existing facility posed some challenges. Trying to fit these spaces within an existing facility may not have been as efficient as it would have been if we had torn it down and were able to start anew. So we worked with that. So that sort of built up some of the extra space and how we got to a 70,000-square-foot building. I'll talk a little bit about more with some specific examples of how we got there. So going through this process, this is just some diagrams for security purposes. We are not showing what departments are going where within the new building, but if you look, on the left-hand side here, this giant square rectangle is the new addition, and this is the existing building. So basement, the second floor, or yeah, first floor, second floor, third floor, which is often referred to as the penthouse. That's existing, that's not being expanded. The addition will only be two stories, no basement, it'll be slab upgrade. So when doing the space programming and starting to fit those pieces into the existing building, we're looking at improved circulation for both people and vehicles, so that's both for staff and public visiting the site. Improved evidence handling, so there's definitely improved efficiencies with that. Private victim and witness support rooms, so trying to separate and make sure that victim and witnesses are protected. That's part of the security measures that we're looking at in the design. Embedded social and child services, so as we expand the social services within the police department, having spaces for them that are separated and have, they have special entrances that they're protected and separated from perpetrators or other people that they, we don't want to have them intervene with. Dedicated rest and recovery spaces. So one of the goals for the new police station is related to retention and recruitment and having these spaces for police officers and the amount of stress that they deal with on a daily basis, including dispatch as well. We're having spaces built in that allows them to rest and recover and have spaces to gather. So we've included a staff hub, which has a kitchen, seating area, wellness areas, internal courtyard that's private for them, and it's a secure space. So that was very important for us. The gender-inclusive flexibility, so this has to do with the number of male versus female officers, which has changed over time. And that's one of the challenges in the existing PD is the women's locker room is insufficient. Hopefully, people have had the opportunity to watch the video that we did with Concord TV that shows some of the challenges with space, and you'll see the women's locker room, they had to repurpose, they had to put lockers in the shower because they, they don't have room for lockers. So built into this new facility is flexible locker rooms. So over time, as the genders of different officers flux between men versus women, you can change that, and you have room to grow and expand within those spaces. can change that, and you have room to grow and expand within those spaces. And then emergency preparedness, so making sure that adjacencies and circulation is the most efficient so officers can be on the ready to respond. So just some examples of spaces within the facility, comparing of what the existing, I gave sort of overarching square footage is, but this specifically gets into some of the detailed departments within the facility itself of what is recommended or needed for currently, what they have existing, and what we need and what's actually being provided. So a lobby is a great example. If anybody's been to the police station, the lobby's not the most welcoming environment. It's only 140 square feet right now. Currently, they're recommending we need about 1,500 square feet. So we're proposing about 1,800 square feet. Lockers were about 1,200 square feet. We're expanding that to 1,900 square feet. So this is detailed in your report. I'm not going to go through everything, but you can see where we've gone from 59,000 square feet of needed to 70,000 square feet proposed. And you'll see with some of the spaces, they're a little bit bigger than needed. So it's like 200 square feet extra here, 200 square feet extra there. So there's no 10,000-square-foot area that's making up that difference, there are pieces here and there. So this is the, last week, we had a presentation with the architects. It was a community input session where they presented the building that's proposed. So some of the goals of the new building were reusing the existing iconic main entry. So there's sort of that wavy thing there. This is the, this is a renderings of the existing building. We'll be replacing the windows with a more energy-efficient material plus ballistic heated glass. That's another expense added for that. And then this over here is the addition that we'll be adding there. So trying to blend in the materials together so that it all cohesively comes together. The site design will be using SEPTED principles, so crime prevention through environmental design. And that means they've added benches, granite blocks, other ways of adding additional security and barriers to the site, but having it blend into the design itself. The, let's see a little bit better here. There's a nice added feature, commemorative plaques for retired officers and civilian staff that have been, names added to this. That's a security feature. So it's achieving two goals of honoring people that have served the community, but also providing protection for current members. Some of the other features that are included in the new facility are flexible community meeting and training spaces. So some of the challenges that the police have right now is there's insufficient training space, so they have to go to other communities that incurs additional costs for the city. They have to pay for not only the training, but staff time per diem, mileage, et cetera. With the expanded training facility, they'll be able to train onsite and save the money for the city in that way. There'll be community space that's in the non-secure area, so members of the public can, or be able to come into that space where they can have, is it the crime lab? What's the monthly meeting? I can't remember. Crime line meetings, sorry. Or a Boy Scout or some other community could have meetings within that space itself. There's dedicated interview rooms, including soft interview rooms off the lobby. There's multiple Sally Port bases to improve efficiency, specialized evidence storage, making it easier to access different types of evidence. For officer and staff well-being, there's wellness and physical conditioning spaces to help support training requirements, dedicated report-writing areas with direct access to booking and patrol vehicles, ergonomic workstations. For logistical support, there's adequate patrol gear and, excuse me, patrol gear and vehicle storage, evidence vehicle storage, and energy-efficient systems. This is a view of the secure area. This is where patrol vehicles and staff vehicles will be within a secure fence area. The garage spaces, so right now, there's limited garage space in the existing facility. So some of the specialized vehicles have to be parked outside, which impacts their life cycle and potentially increases, decreases, increases maintenance costs and reduces their life cycle. So by giving dedicated garage space, reduces maintenance costs, but also reduces the, vehicles won't have to be replaced as often. That is the goal of having those garage spaces. Some of the other selections for the building, materials for the new addition were selected for their durability, energy efficiency, cost effectiveness, and complementary aesthetic to the existing building itself. Building systems that are proposed have been selected for longevity and energy efficiency, including LED lights, efficiency and efficiency control, low-temperature condensing boilers, modular chillers, and low-flow plumbing fixtures. This is the proposed site plan. So you can see the addition versus the existing building. The site has been maxed out. We've been able to squeeze about 91 parking spaces onsite, and that's between the secure parking and public parking. We continue to figure out different ways to add parking onsite or get as much as we can on there. Secure space, one of the...
Your Honor, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
There just seems to be a lot of distraction going on. You're doing a wonderful job. I was just wondering if we could limit the distractions?
Should I take a recess while there's distractions?
There's a lot of conversations. I can see that you're being impacted. Sorry about that.
Can we take a three-minute recess? Is that all right?
Sure.
Can we just suspend a second? Okay. Take a three-minute recess.
So this is where it stands today, looking for efficiencies and continued changes on the site. Some of the feedback we've received, we do have some screening along the fence line. This is the historic district of their residential properties back here where we had a chain link fence. We had a request to do a more historically accurate screening fence, so we're looking, exploring options for that to address some of the butters concerns over there. And we have proposed screening along the northern side of the property. There's an existing residential property adjacent to there. We do have a meeting in two weeks with the owner of that property to discuss potential easements for adding additional vegetation so that they have more visual and sound buffer along that side if this project does move forward. One of the things that was a benefit for the site is it is along an existing public transit route, so there is a bus station there that will be retained, it will remain so that, and then we will be adding bicycle facilities, so trying to support alternative transportation to the site. It is at an existing lighted intersection that is being studied under another CIP, so we're working closely with the engineering department division and VHB, the traffic engineer, working on that to make sure that the project fits in with any of the proposed improvements to that intersection. Some of the other considerations as we move forward with the design, having green, meeting green building standards or sustainable design considerations not only help with meeting some of our renewable energy goals that the city has established, but also helps reducing energy costs as well. So we have high-performance building systems to reduce energy use and operating costs, and Jay Burgess could probably answer a lot better any questions you have about that. But through those, we've been able to project that our energy use will be 23% below the national average for public safety facilities, so we put a lot of work into that, trying to achieve water efficiency through low-flow pumping fixtures, but also reducing irrigation needs by putting native or drought-tolerant plantings in the landscape. Currently, we have proposed a green roof on portions of the existing building and also the addition, and that's to help mitigate heat island effects and also stormwater runoff. And then we're currently exploring rooftop solar feasibility. There are challenges to that. The existing structure cannot support solar on the roof, so for the addition, we're looking at that, but we're challenged by the mechanical equipment for the redundant system taking up space, shading from the existing building and shading from adjacent tree cover. But we are looking at about 6,000 square feet may be available for that, and we could cover 15% of the energy load with solar if that is something that council wants to prioritize the cost. We are starting to lose incentives. People are probably paying attention to the news, it's not as cost-effective to put solar. So looking at investing in larger solar projects throughout the city to help green the grid as a whole, as opposed to investments on the site itself, and instead invest in energy efficiency on the site. So those are things we're exploring currently as part of the 60% design package. So the cost estimate. So here's a brief overview of the cost estimate where we stand right now. It is a 70,275 approximately square foot building that's being proposed. Right now, we're looking at a bottom-line construction cost of $45,500, I'm sorry, $45,000, $45,500, yeah, $45,000.
Check the 40.
So that's about $647 per square foot. We were able to compare this with other new police stations regionally, and we're right on par with other facilities. Salem, New Hampshire is probably the most recent one that's doing construction. They were running about $775 per square feet. However, we just got information yesterday that they've did some value engineering and they're down to about $670 per square feet. So we're still below that square footage. The benefit of having Milestone on board from the very beginning is we've been able to look at constructibility and feasibility and materials and do cost-cutting as we went along with the design project, so we've been value engineering throughout the project. But I'll give more information about other options that we have. For the financial projections, so this is on page 18 of your report, it's a little tough to see, but hopefully you can see it within the report in front of you. We've broken out, the top section is the funds that have already been appropriated by council, so the property acquisition bond, the due diligence bond, weatherization bond, the design bond, and then cash, the money that has been appropriated for interior property maintenance, so snow removal, landscaping, et cetera. So looking out forecasting, we included fiscal year '25, just so you could see the money that's been expended to date. And then the proposed bond issuance, if appropriated and approved by council, we are suggesting it be broken into two separate construction bonds, the first one being $19 million that covers the initial site work and work over the first year of the project, and the second one about $26.5 million. And that number could potentially change, so we want that, that number will include construction contingencies. So right now, we have about $3.3 million in contingencies because we're still at the early stages of design. We're not exactly boiled down to the exact number. We'll work with Milestone to get a guaranteed maximum price in January if the schedule moves forward as currently proposed, and that number may come down. So we want to break it into two bonds so that we can reduce that second bond if possible. Also, we're looking into different grant opportunities or donations. Until we have an approved project, we can't go after those grant funds, so hopefully we can get that number down again through grant funding and other donations to move forward. It's a little bit enlarged. So just so you can see the implications for tax rates, fiscal year '27, you'll start to see, the numbers start to go up as the bonds are sold. That bond for the weather, excuse me, the design has not been sold yet. We're at the, previously when it was decided to be appropriated, the decision was made to hold off on selling the design bond to coordinate with the construction bonds, so that'll be sold in fiscal year '27, so those numbers jump up there. So we usually look at about a $400,000 assessed value a house, the lower number here, so you can see the cost impacts over the next five years, and we can give you information beyond that if you would like to see that. Just briefly, we've projected annual O&M costs that the city will incur by taking on a new building. The costs themselves are similar to the square footage of the existing, sorry, cost per square foot for, from the existing facility. It is a larger facility, so it will be more money. The maintenance and custodial needs will be higher, so it's recommended additional staff be brought on board to cover those additional needs. And those are also in the report, so you can look at that more closely and ask if you have any questions for more clarifications on that. So currently, we are looking at additional value engineering or add alternate options. Here's a list of things that we've been able to go through with our construction management team and our design team of ways we can potentially save, or things that we can sort of hold in a bucket if we have money at the end of the project to add back in. Some of them are like the green roof or rooftop solar, things that we're still exploring for green energy or green building goals. Radiant heat sidewalks is something that we're still looking at that has impact on the HVAC system, so if that's something that we want to reduce the scope in, we have to do a little bit more homework to figure out what the cost implication of that is. And signage, reducing the grade of furniture, material selection, using lower-grade carpeting or wall finishes, removing interior window treatments. So these are the things that we're starting to look at and ways we can start to potentially save money as we move forward with the project. So in summary, today's request is for you to review the report and set a public hearing for November 10th to vote on the resolution to appropriate funds for construction. I will note that the distraction is that resolution I passed out does have a typo. It is for the $45.5 million, so we'll get you a revised report and resolution that has those numbers that match. Benefits for the police department, it'll help them achieve a new modern facility that'll meet current needs through, oh, sorry, I should have changed that, through at least 2077, so we're looking for 50 years into the future. They'll, will remove barriers to state and national accreditation. It'll strengthen morale. I think you could talk to any police officer and know that the existing building definitely impacts morale, and it impacts recruitment and retention efforts. Will improve safety and efficiency of operations. In addition, the prosecutor's office will be relocated in this current proposed plan to be, to be within the building, they'll be on the top floor. That allows us to vacate rented space, we're currently paying for them in leased space on Horseshoe Pond, Commercial Street, but that'll help improve operational efficiencies and interdepartmental coordination. It'll give the opportunity to renovate the Green Street Police Station for other municipal uses, and it will relocate, excuse me, relocate the police department, closer to the fire department so we can centralize our public services. Just some other thoughts, where this current proposal plan meets the goal of preserving and adaptively reusing the mid-century modern building. Value engineering and cost savings have been considered throughout the design process, and to meet the current schedule of spring of 2026 construction start, that's something that we've had a goal ever since we've purchased the Fort Booton Street property. Funds would need to be appropriated by the end of this year, otherwise we risk pushing start to 2027. Site contractors are already booking into next year, so the longer we wait, the bigger risk we have of pushing it into the future, which will definitely increase the construction costs. Even in the past year, we've seen numbers go up. So likely could be multiple millions of dollars annually if we push this off into the future. So currently, our schedule, we've acquired the property, we've weatherized the property, we're in the design and permitting phase pending council approval. We'll move forward with final bidding for construction in January. Construction will start as early as April of '26, hopefully move in in October of '27 and start to operate in November of '27. Also concurrently, we are doing a space assessment and master plan of the municipal complex to see how that building could be reused if the police department does relocate. So we have a website, conquerednh.gov/newpolicestation, where we have information about the project. There's videos, the tour that we did with Concorde TV of the existing facility, as well as the meeting we had last week and the presentation. We'll have this report up, all the previous resolutions and reports are on that page, so it's a area, a place where people can go to to get information on this project, and we'll continue to update it throughout this project.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thanks.
Sorry about the distraction.
That's okay.
Questions?
Your Honor, and thank you so much for the presentation. I know some of us around the table were at the community presentation that you had given along with the architect, which was also really informative. I think, could you remind me, I think that the number was in terms of delays, if we don't move forward with this, was it something like $40,000 a month that was projected?
That was a number that the consultant had given that he's seen in other parts of the country.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? The Counselor Schlosser.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very clear. Is the value engineering already factored into your overall budget yet? 1.4 million?
Not all of it. So this list that goes back, this list has not been included in that number.
It's not been included, I see. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. What is about, how, do you know how many, how many square feet the training space encompasses?
We're going to ask that question.
4,000.
I can look that up. We do have that information called out, but yeah.
Yeah, I have a second question on that. And how is the 1,700 square feet of growth space configured? Is that just like empty space that's over in a corner somewhere?
So there's about 400 square feet in the computer crime and the investigations unit, so that'll be built out as a shell, so it'll be closed off, but it'll be ready for fit and finish at a later date.
Okay.
And then another area is with, so that's in the new addition, and then the remaining is on the second floor within the existing building. And again, it'll be shelled, so they can finish it, whether it's evidence storage, additional office space.
So it's not configured in a way that would allow us to say, okay, we'll leave that expansion space to a future council?
Correct.
And how much, how many square feet for the, for the training space?
I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have it, sorry, we don't have it.
It accommodates our current.
Jay's coming forward.
Yeah, it's about 1,400 square feet.
1,400 square feet, okay. I know at the presentation that Counselor Brady-Saxon referenced, there was talk about an electronic, you know, training facility, things like that. And while I know that it's more convenient to have everything in the building, I also know that, for example, Primex has what I assume is a similar type of system, which is just down the road. And as we look for economies, you know, how critical is, how critical is that facility?
So the, we already own that machine, that, so we already have that over there, and with the, the existing room that we're in, it does have some space limitations, so the extra space posed here would accommodate that. It'd also accommodate a closet to pack it up and put it away in.
So it's really just someplace to put what we already have?
Yes, and use it properly.
That makes it easier to use, okay. Counselor Brady-Saxon?
I'm sorry, Counselor, I thought I said.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to defer if you would like.
This is like, this happens all the time.
We're very polite people.
Too polite. So I was also at the hearing, sorry, not the hearing, the meeting that took place, and I thought you did a great job with the presentation. I know one of the questions that got asked was the size of the building. 70,000 square feet seems like a lot, and I know part of that is with respect to the addition. So one of the questions I got from someone coming out of the meeting after, you know, a day later was, would there be any cost savings if we simply, you know, made the addition bigger to get us to whatever the number is we need and just not bother renovating the existing building?
I don't know if I understand that, so.
So my understanding based on the presentation was that the size of the addition is driven by the need to meet this Level 4 code issue. And so the question I was asked was, okay, the addition is, I think it's, is it like 40,000 square feet?
It's around 38,000 square feet.
Okay. So if we just increased it to 60,000 or 55, whatever the number was, would there be a cost savings of doing that as opposed to renovating the existing building to get to that 70 number?
So we did a cost analysis of cost per square foot for the addition versus the existing. To renovate the existing, it's about $514 per square foot. To build the new addition, it's around $717 per square foot. So that'll act, it's more expensive to do the addition than renovate the existing, so it would actually make the cost a way up.
That's a follow-up.
Follow-up.
Thank you. So with that understanding, have we looked at ways to reduce the size of the addition so that it's at the minimum level required to comply?
So what's driving the size of the addition is the facilities that the police department has depended, determined to be critical, so holding cells, patrol, the Sally Port, dispatch, and those are all on the first floor for accessibility, and plus the garages for storing all the special equipment. The second floor is where the computer crimes are, where evidence storage is, so those might be actually a little bit larger than they need to be, but it's really driven by the things that need to be on the first floor. So technically, we could reduce what's on the second floor, but you'd have a sort of a stepped-back building, and I don't know that that would actually give enough cost savings. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that, like, in the original building next door, the originally proposed evidence room, the property and evidence room, is completely full. It's full of just guns right now, and so we've had to find about 10 different places in the building to, to store evidence and expand the mezzanine space and such. And so if we're looking at being in one place for 50 years, we want to have an extra-large evidence room to be able to accommodate our evidence over the next 50 years. Some of the evidence that we have is permanent, we cannot get rid of it. And so I think that the design and the recommendations by the consultants have been spot-on.
And some of the costs related to HVAC and electricity are some of the biggest numbers, and those won't necessarily change by reducing, they may change a little bit, but those numbers may not come down as much as we need them to come down just by reducing a couple of hundred, or a couple thousand square feet.
Before we get to Counselor Brady-Saxon, I can hear a constituent just saying to me, why do you have to keep evidence permanently?
Usually that's in a homicide case.
Okay.
Statute of limitations in certain cases.
All right. Counselor?
Thank you. Have you considered moving any of the other offices to the building that we are currently paying rental space for in order to meet a cost savings?
So currently, we pay for prosecutor's office and human services, so prosecutor's office will move, human services, we're actually looking to move up here.
Okay. I'm sorry, follow-up. Are there any other departments that we've considered or offices that would, Mr. Manager, would there be?
Parking.
Parking?
Parking, yeah, so everything, those are the only two offices that we actually lease space outside that we're paying other people for. So those, our intention all along was to bring them back to the campus, and of course, it makes sense to have the prosecutors and the police department, but it also makes sense to have human services back on city campus too, because right now, they're just by themselves, they're out of the way, they're hard to find.
Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was curious, as I look at your projections about sworn officers and non-sworn, the non-sworn officers positions go up kind of sporadically, and I would not have expected that, so I mean, what is the reason for that?
I haven't looked at that, but, you know, it takes into consideration that, for instance, for example, our social worker unit has gone from zero to three in, what, less than two years, and, you know, the, the community service aid concept that we have, one of those right now is, so bringing those on, especially if they're 24, 28 hours a week, part-time, those are very valuable to patrol and to the community. We've also would look to in the future at exploring additional civilians that work in our property room, so that's, that could be it. Right now, the city manager knows that we're woefully understaffed in our dispatch, and I can see that growing in the next decade. You know, we have seven full-timers, we really should have probably nine or 10 to adequately cover the schedule.
Yeah, it makes total sense to me because, first of all, they're, they're not Group 2 employees, so they're, they're cheaper. But social workers, evidence people, I mean, even something as simple as taking routine, you know, reports for vandalism or something that doesn't necessarily involve an officer, it makes, makes total sense, so, thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Can I just ask something?
Absolutely.
When I, when I asked them to look at timeframe of doing this, we've done projects in the past, our major capital projects, we've looked at 50-year timeframes. When the, when the city council, whatever reasons that were in place when they built the previous police station, built it and realized as it was done that it was already too small, and then as they expanded it, they realized, after it was finished, they realized it was too small. And so when we look at this, you know, you could, and there's always ways to economize here, but when you look at this, do you, do you want to put something that you build now, knowing that, and, you know, and to me, if you're coming back here, if city council's coming back here in 10 or 20 years for the major addition and major improvements to this, we haven't done our job. We really haven't. You, you can see the growth of this community, you can see, people talk today about it being a destination and place, you know, when, you know, and they think about, a lot of these, a lot of facilities are built based on populations, well, when you're a capital city and a major economic driver in, in the state, there's a lot of activity that goes on here. Wait, wait till the next major protest occurs downtown coming up very shortly, and you have thousands and thousands of people descending on the city and the support, people want to have support systems and services for them, whether it's that or anything else that goes on, you need to have the facilities in place to do that. And I don't see the, the needs for the social worker positions going down. I mean, that was when we introduced, when the chief and I introduced that two years ago. It was zero, we were at zero, we had been at zero for 100 years, and now we're at three, and I could see us being at five in no time at all behind another person and also adding a, you know, support staff to that. So we're, you know, but how do you do it economically and how you do it in a smart way? And there's always ways to look at this, and that's why when, when Beth put it together, you see all the ideas that at least staff has come up of how to reduce things, and the whole idea is now you look at it and you say, okay, this is something we'd love to have, but we can't afford it, the taxpayer can't, you know, can't do it this year, and we'll meet you there. But this is, it's no different than when we did Main Street, than when we did the community center, than any other major projects, just finding the right solution for the, for where we are today and where we need to be in 50 years.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Schlosser.
So from '80 to '23, the growth in calls for service was double the population growth. Population growth was about 1.1% a year, and calls for service were 2.6% a year. So that ratio, that double, more, the increase in the calls for service has more than doubled the rate of increase of the population. Do you see that continuing, and if it, that, because that, that's sort of like dramatically increases the needed calls for, the expected calls for service? And what is driving that dramatic increase in calls for service?
So, so as I talked about in our most recent meeting, is, is that calls for service are sometimes calls from the community, or they're self-generated by a police officer. And when, we currently have 10 vacancies, and since 2014 to current, our staffing numbers have always fluctuated downwards, and they get better and they, and they stay down, so we, we can have upwards to 18, 19 vacancies. So if you can get up to full staff, and if officers typically generate five calls for service a day or for, for their shift that are self-generated, you think about, if you have 20 vacancies, how many calls for service can they generate in over a calendar year? So you're going to see that swing as we get back to, to full staff. I think the, the calls for service that we currently do today are, not all, but most of, well, many of them are very complex, and they, they require tons of hours after the call is closed to further investigate that, that incident. So calls for service as, just as, by looking at, it's a good number to look at and take, take the temperature on that, but you really have to peel back what's, what's driving it one way or the other.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Chief. I'll have to state a motion to accept this report and set a public hearing for November 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Sorry, can? Yes.
So Beth mentioned there was a typo on there. I have revised information, if you want, so that way you'll have exactly the same thing as that the, the community will see on the website, so I'll hand those out to you as you go along.
Excuse me, is it the entire report or just the?
I got the whole thing through, so that way you don't have to worry about which package.
All right. Are we too distracted to vote?
We can take the unbound.
Yeah.
Was it collected?
Yeah, just so you don't confuse.
It's even hot.
It's hot off the press.
These are dead.
Those are old.
Thanks.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much, great job. This brings us to items pulled from the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, item number nine.
Yes, it was pulled from consent by Councilwoman Fantasy. It's listed as a referral to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department. It's a communication from Concord National Youth Softball and Concord Northeast regarding unification into a single recreation softball program and proposed expansion of Concord National Youth Softball's lease to include Dillon and Senate Fields.
Thank you. So, I did pull this, because I wanted to add as part of the recommend, as part of the referral, that we also have Parks and Rec look at the Little League fields, because there's been recent consolidation of the Little Leagues into one Concord Little League. And so, with the Memorial Field project looking to potentially eliminate one of the Little League fields, I think it probably makes sense to have Parks and Rec look at sort of both softball and Little League at the youth level and make sure that the, the fields that are being allocated make sense. So that, that's what I wanted to add to the referral.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That was my motion.
Is your motion moved and seconded?
Yeah.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 24. Yes. I apologize. Sorry. Item number 24.
This was pulled from consent by Councilor Brown. It's a report from the Deputy City Manager Finance regarding 2026 youth, uh, excuse me, young adult membership age correction for Beaver Meadow Golf Course.
Thank you, Councilor Brown.
Yes, so I pulled this because there are actually a number of typos, changes to this report. In addition to this age change, we did have young adults, they were, it was 19 to 29 in 2016, and actually in 2016, the college rate was higher than what it was in 2025. So I, I agree with Councilor, or I'm sorry, I agree with Mr. Schweiger, that I think we can keep the young adult rate, 19 to 29. The other typos that I found in the report related to the budget details, Proctor and Tilton had not used Beaver Meadow until just rea- actually, Proctor has never used Beaver Meadow. If you look at our budget detail for 2026, they weren't included. Tilton, Bo, and Bishop Brady were, we expected that they would only pay 2,500, which isn't even the rate, which hasn't changed since 2011, which is $3,160. So, you know, I, I don't understand why we are bringing in boarding school students when there is nothing still at Parks and Rec for Concord kids. And now, the rate is listed as $15 for kids, and Tilton, they have eight golf courses closer to them. They pay more at their, at Lockmere where they go. So I don't understand why we need to include boarding school students. I think that should be eliminated when we do not have anything at Parks and Rec. Also, Councilwoman Fantasy asked me, he said, where are you getting, where are you getting your math? Last month, when we were looking at these rates, the report that council got did not have the revenue for 2025 that the golf advisory committee had. So that revenue information was omitted. What I was doing is I had printed off the golf advisory committee report, added that to the recommended increase, and it didn't meet our 2026 budget. That's why I was saying we can't accept this, because it's not even going to get us to budget.
So do you have a motion, Councilor?
So, I am going to say that I do not accept this report, that I think at the very least it should stay at 19 to 29. In addition to the changes, the recent rate changed the family rate from two people to four. That is four adults for one rate, which is obscene, actually.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'm still speaking to my, I'm still, still speaking to this.
Counselor, I under, you're, you're making a great speech, and it's very well organized, but the item before us is to correct a typographical error.
So I'm saying that we should not accept this, but I'm also showing that the report that we received had other changes which drastically reduced rates, so we are not increasing revenue, we are.
So, Counselor, what is your motion? Does your motion?
My motion is that we do not accept this report, and actually.
Your motion is to not accept the report?
Not accept this report, but I also think that we need to send it back to the golf advisory committee, so that the rate changes actually meet our budget expectations, and the family rate should go back to two people.
May I help you? I'm sorry to interrupt you, may I help you? I'm trying to discern what the motion is. So the motion is to, is to refer this back to the golf course advisory committee, is that your motion?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that the rates reflect, will get us to the budget expectations of 2026.
Thank you, do we have a second? All right, the motion fails for lack of a second, do we have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all right? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, item 25.
This item was pulled from consent by Councilor Fantasy. It's a report from the Director of Office of Management and Budget regarding the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the City of Concord for fiscal year 2026.
Councilwoman Fantasy?
Thank you. I'd like to invite up Rebecca Dougherty and Olivia Harvey to speak to us a little bit about this. For those of you who don't know, this is the 11th consecutive year that we have received this award, and Rebecca and Olivia are the ones responsible for putting together that budget, so if you can just give it, introduce yourself and give us a little bit about.
I am Rebecca Dougherty, I'm the Director of the Office of Management and Budget. I've been with the city for about, almost 12 years now.
Olivia Harvey, I'm the Management and Budget Analyst, and I've been with the city since April.
So, this is a national recognition from the Government Finance Officers Association for best practices in budgeting. We were, the City of Concord was among 190 communities to be recognized for clear, concise, and comprehensible budget document. This is a very high honor, and I'd like to thank you once again for all of your hard work in putting it together. We spent many long nights reviewing all the documentation, and I just wanted to give the opportunity to recognize you both, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the report.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
I thi- I think it's, you know, the, the work that's been done at us been, has been spectacular. And, and I think one of the things you'll notice here is that really calls out the transparency in budgeting, work that's done for the entire community, so it's not just for the council, it's for the entire community to be able to see the information that's out there and look at it and understand. Now whether or not people understand the intricacies of all the different budgeting pieces, that's one thing, but the information is there for people if they want to go look for it. And that's not true of a lot of places, and I think that's, I think that's really, the accolades go to you too, for the good work. Again, this is year after year after year, everybody who's been on the council gets to see the quality of this information. I have to tell you, this is not the quality of the information you get in most places. This is spectacular, and congratulations.
Thank you. We've not been able to produce such a spectacular document without the council, without city staff, and without administration. Our focus is always on concision, clarity, and transparency, and this award recognizes the city for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that great work. Wow. Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Thank you so much. And you didn't even have to worry about the music playing you off. Madam City Clerk, item 28.
This item was pulled from the consent agenda by Councilor Brown. It's a resolution to revise the fiscal year 2026 general fund budget due to the final MS1 real growth estimate reduction.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Brown.
Yes, I am just, first, wondering how we didn't see this coming. And secondly, this seems like it's an appropriation. And if it is an appropriation after budget, then it needs to have a public hearing, per our charter number 37.
As you mentioned, I don't agree.
Is this not an appropriation? The use of the funds?
This is the appropriate way to address this issue, and to see it coming, this is, again, if the city's going to try to support affordable housing, this is what, this is what happens when people file for these, for these agreements, and if the city is going to, I mean, you, you can't stop people from selling property to the state of New Hampshire.
I, I'm just surprised that we didn't factor in, you know, the, the police station that we knew Mr. Dupree was going to be selling, we didn't recognize that. My second point, that we are appropriating this report, seeks to appropriate funds, and per our charter number 37, we have to have a public hearing before we appropriate funds after budget.
Mr. LeBron, report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council? Actually, we're not appropriating funds, we're actually de-authorizing some funds. So we've got $176,000 that we're de-authorizing from expenditures. You look at the charter and the appropriation of funds, it's for expenditures, and so the city administration is not allowed to spend money unless the city council has authorized those funds through an appropriation process. After the charter needs to be, or after the regular budget adoption process, needs to be by a two-thirds vote of the city council to do that. What we're doing here is we're actually, if you look at the, go to just that tax rate calculation sheet, so we're showing a deauthorization or a reduction of the actual appropriations, and then we're looking at 176,500, and then we're also looking at using 105,000 from fund balance in order to help support this effort, as well as where you, we're reducing the overlay calculation, which is not an expenditure line in the budget, it's just something that is part of the overall tax rate setting by, by 125,000, reducing that from 200,000 to 75,000. So all of this was done in an effort to try to keep the tax rate at the same level that was recommended at the budget adoption process, understanding that you also had a vote tonight that you increased the tax, amount to raising taxes by 260,000 for the firefighter contract. So, this is really a reduction of expenditures, which is a deauthorization, so a public hearing, it's not required for a deauthorization of expenditures. I consulted with our city, city solicitor on this issue, and he agrees wholeheartedly that we've done this in the correct way.
Super. Thank you, Mr. LeBron.
However, the, I'm sorry, the increase.
Question, Counselor?
Yes, the increase, the use of fund balance, isn't that an appropriation? Isn't that, that's an increase?
It's an, it's an estimate of a, of a revenue as opposed to an appropriation, so when you think of appropriations, it's actually the, the allowance of spending money, that's the appropriation. So when we look at the overall budget for the city, whatever that dollar amount is, we need to have the authority by the city council for us to spend that money. All the rest of the revenues are revenue recommendations or revenue estimates for everything that we have, from motor vehicle registrations to, you know, it's taxes, you know, we make an estimate of what the tax is going to be, interest income, all those things are all estimates, those, so that's not an appropriation of funds to spend, those are all revenue estimates.
Claire, I just would like to clarify, yes. So, it doesn't matter what the line is, we can increase it, decrease it, without having to have a public hearing, is that what you're saying?
In, in the revenues?
I'm saying for, like, a fund bal- for this instance.
Yep.
So anytime we want to increase a fund balance, we would not need a public hearing to do that.
If you're.
If it exists already, is what you're saying.
If you want to increase the use of fund balance, so what, what, could you give me an example of how you would increase?
Well, like I'm just saying, like you, this is, this exists, and you're saying we're just increasing it, it's not an appropriation, but we're increasing that. So if we have a line somewhere that says we're using this fund balance, we can just say we want to increase this by 200,000, and that would not require a public hearing?
Public hearing would be for whatever you're going to expend the money on, so if we're going to increase the use of fund balance by 200,000 to buy, you know, four new police cruisers, you know, that would require a, a public hearing by the city council and a two-thirds vote of the city council.
Councilwoman Fantasy?
Thank you. So, I just want to make sure I understand, so, let's say, for example, rather than use of fund balance, we decided to estimate that our revenues from taxes, property taxes, would increase by 105,000, we could do that.
You could, that would probably not work out real well in this scenario, but, I mean.
I'm just trying to understand, we talk about revenue lines, like, we could, we could theoretically estimate that the revenue for car registrations were going to increase by 105,000 if we wanted to.
You could, and what the net effect of that would be is that the, you know, amount to raise in taxes would go down by 105,000. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, it's an offset in, in those pieces, you know, and you're, I mean, I'd love to be exact on the revenues that we receive, you know, but it's kind of hard to be exact on interest income or motor vehicle registrations or any of those kind of things, it's just, you know, I have a crystal ball, it's not working very well most of the time.
Mr. City Manager?
Simply put, we're asking you, we, we would like to spend less money so that you can keep the tax rate down. That's the, that's the request.
Do we have a motion? So, move to accept. Move to accept?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Thank you, Mr. LeBron, appreciate it. Appreciate the good work that your team did.
Thank you, they're phenomenal.
Yes. That brings us to comments requests. Let's start with Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. We want everyone to have a happy and safe Halloween celebrations coming up in Pennacook. It's called Gate Night for various reasons that I won't get into, but it's the day before Halloween, which is the 30th, the 30th, and hope everyone has a safe time there. For additional Halloween fun, the Pennacook Historical Society is holding their annual Halloween parade, a game sitter, and a parade around the Bog neighborhood. You can come, wear your costumes. That's on Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the Pennacook Historical Society on 11 Pennacook Street. Thank you.
Would you believe that in my hometown, on Gate Night, there was an outhouse that hung over the Ashawag River that was pushed in the river every Gate Night?
We don't do that kind of thing in Pennacook.
Not that I recommend it. Counselor Horn?
Which name?
He stole my thunder, I have nothing.
All right. Counselor McNamara?
Thank you, Your Honor. It feels like it's been a long wait, especially when you're, you're a child, but it's finally here, this Friday, October 7th, at 5:00 p.m., we will have the opening celebration for the new Monkey Round Playground. Thanks to all the hard work that the Friends of White Park have done, and the city's work, and the community who has supported this along the way, especially towards the end, it's a pretty incredible thing. So, if you'd like to join us, Friday, October 17th, at 5:00 p.m.
All I have is for my fellow colleagues, as the city manager pointed out, I did take a class, it was the New Hampshire Municipal Association Financial Policies Certificate Course, and it was wonderful, and they will come and give us training, because we actually have legal obligations. We have to maintain internal controls, that is RSA 41:9. I asked the city clerk to share a checklist for you to look at, this is something that is very important, it's our responsibility, and the New Hampshire Municipal Association is wonderful, so I would highly recommend looking at those courses. It was free, so.
Thank you.
Costume tonight, thank you.
Counselor, move.
Sure. Thank you. I just want to remind folks that there's the community costume swap for Halloween costumes. You can drop off donated costumes to Concord Public, Public Library at the front desk and the actual swap will be at the Concord Public Library on Saturday, October 18th from 9:30.
Thank you. Counselor Chief.
Good, thank you. Just one thing from Concord Parks and Rec, the fall/winter brochure has gone out. I believe it was delivered to schools today, so anybody who wants to register for any programming, those are now available and go check it out online.
Counselor Schlosser. Yes, thank you. All right. Just a second.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all counselors that were at the multicultural event. I think, I thank people that attended, participated, volunteered and supported this to make it a successful event. There was eight counselors at the council table and we had a lot of traffic there, so I want also to thank all the business and people that sponsored this event to make this year a successful event. Without their sponsorship, it would not be a successful event. And thank you to everybody that make it happen, from people that kept us safe, to people that volunteered their time, to people that had tables there. And thanks to Jessica Levingston and his, her team for an excellent planning and to everybody that was involved, we had a great time. Thank you all.
I'll just remind you, the city clerk is still looking for her banner.
Okay, I have it in my car. Yeah, you asked me yesterday or the day before, I told you I have it in my car, so you can get it anytime.
We'll get together afterwards, all right. Counselor Schultz.
Two very different things, thank you, man. First, I just want to take a moment to recognize that there's been another death on the Ward Nine side of Loudon Road on October 3rd at about 7:10 p.m. Hit and run accident occurred and unfortunately Elizabeth Benoit, I hope I'm saying her name correctly, did pass away. And I hope that anyone who has any information about this will contact the Concord Police. And to thank all of those who responded to this incident, I'm sure that was not easy. I'm sad that we have a second one so soon after another one. Any death like this is, is unfortunate and I'm sure that is inadequate to say, but it is as it is. The other thing I wanted to say is just a two-sentence land acknowledgement in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. This comes from Indigenous New Hampshire Collaborative Collective. You can find multiple types that have been used in New Hampshire at indigenousnh.com/land-acknowledgement. We are located on Endakina, which is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennacook and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land and waterways and the people, Alnobak, who have stewarded Endakina throughout the generations.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Foot.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of events I attended, had a great time. I and Counselor McNamara, Fennessey and the mayor went to the Thrive Walk in Their Shoes fundraiser for those who have experienced abuse. And so it was very enlightening and it was a, had a good time. Nice fundraiser. It was good for Main Street and good for the community. I also attended the Friends of the Beeve Golf fundraiser this past Sunday at Beaver Meadow Golf Course. It was a five-hour and 40-minute round. I'll never do it again, but I had a lot of fun. And it was cold and windy. And then lastly, building on Counselor Kurtz's recommendation that we make it very clear to those for the Kino and Social District upcoming vote, I've had numerous people call me, understanding, so I thought we, we spoke one of the last meetings to come up with some sort of card that's going to be some sort of voter educational piece. And I hope that we follow through and make that very clear so folks know exactly what they want to vote for.
I believe that's on the city website, the sample ballot section.
It is, and we do send that handout out with any absentee ballots that we issued.
Sorry I mentioned it, but thank you for your efforts.
It's good to let people know it's there.
Thank you, that's good stuff. Thank you.
Lots of help from the legal department with that. Thank you.
What's that?
Lots of help.
Kudos to the legal department, yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
I don't have anything substantive to, to share, you know, except, you know, this is a great moment. A number of us have been in the trenches on this for a while, meaning the White Park Playground. Also, just to underscore what Counselor Foot said, walk a mile in your shoes, and we were on the McNamara, I was on the McNamara team, and it was a great event, lots of energy. And I think this is the 11th year that that took place. I don't know that I was, have been in every one, but somewhere close to that, I think. So it was great and congratulations to Thrive and the organizers because people ask me sometimes, why do I have these bracelets on my, these plastic bracelets? One is for Alzheimer's, which is what my mother died of, and the other is from one of the walks and it's to remember victims of domestic violence. So let's all keep that in our minds. In any case, I will in a moment entertain a motion to adjourn. I will remind the city counselors that we do have to go, we do have to resume our non-public session. So we'll have a brief break while the room clears and people take care of whatever they have to take care of. Please don't leave, we will be reconvening our non-public session. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. We are adjourned. Five minutes and then we'll come back into non-public.